Fourth, two thousand and fourteen. And I will call our meeting to order. We did just hold a special meeting in order to rededicate Town Hall after it was seismically retrofitted and we now feel much safer in here, which is great. And that went very well. So thanks again to all the town staff that was displaced for several months and all the design and construction folks that made this building not only safer but modernized and beautified just a little bit. So thanks to everyone for that. So we'll start tonight's meeting with roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next up, we'll move to adoption of tonight's agenda. Do we have any corrections or changes or is there action on tonight's agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up is public comment. So this is public comment on anything that's not on tonight's agenda. My guess is that most of you, if not all of you, are here for items that are on the agenda, but if there's something not on there, now would be the time for you to come up and speak for a couple of minutes to the council. Is there anyone? Seeing none, we'll move right ahead to the consent calendar, which we don't have one. So I guess I'm up. The next thing for our presentation, I am going to give my annual State of the Town address, annual review. Looking back on two thousand and thirteen and ahead to two thousand and fourteen, brought to mind many individual achievements, completed projects, and accomplished goals we should be proud of as a community. I have the pleasure in my annual State of the Town address to highlight many of those. Before I do that, I want to recognize one current project that on many levels identifies who we are as a community. This project does not showcase our award-winning food and wine, our premier lodging properties, our strong local economy, or any other familiar aspects of our town that make us a world-class destination. The project that I believe personifies who and what we are is the resurrection of the children's garden at the Yountville Elementary School. Spearheaded by Robin Dunbar and Elizabeth Roth, the garden renovation has symbolic and practical benefits for Yountville. Originally created years ago through the vision and hard work of like-minded residents and dedicated in memory of former school staffer Gwen Ferguson, the garden fell into disrepair over time despite several well-intended efforts. Robin and Elizabeth, both longtime Yountville residents, took the initiative to bring the garden back to life and to make it a viable part of the school's curriculum. What came next is why this project is a microcosm of our community. A call went out to anyone willing to donate time, money, or special skills to help, and a group of citizens came to a project launch meeting. Yes, checks were received and offers to volunteer were given by several generous residents. Also what happened, though, was a person with landscape design experience offered to draw up a plan for the new garden. Another offered to write grants to seek more funding. Another said he would bring his rototiller over to prep the soil. Still others offered to demolish the old planter boxes and take out the aging plants. Calls came in from still more locals who wanted to donate materials, rebuild the planters and irrigation system, and to renovate the old original tool shed. Chefs and gardeners from our iconic French Laundry restaurant volunteered their expertise. Many people, even those who don't have school-aged children, asked, "How can we help?" Yountville Elementary School Principal Tara Bianchi, with support from the Napa County Unified School District, joined in and began figuring out how to turn the garden back into an educational opportunity for her teachers and young students. The town's public works crew also pitched in to remove debris and prepare the parcel for development. All of this effort happened because the people who make up our community care about our community. They are ready and willing to step forward to make it an even better place to live, to work, to attend school, and to visit. I highlight this one project and this group of people, but we all know many more examples of why Yountville is such a special place. Other examples are Barbara and Bud Delinsky, who have given so much of themselves to this town, from helping incorporate it to operating Ranch Market to cooking a Thanksgiving feast for hundreds every year for decades. Now that holiday tradition recently transitioned into the capable hands of Paul and Linda Moyer. Pam and Jim Zidel volunteer for just about everything, including town events, Lincoln Theater performances, and social activities at Rancho de Napa. Bill Dutton spent years on this council and now serves our town through the Yountville School Foundation and many other efforts. The Yountville Kiwanis Club received the Chamber of Commerce George Crane Memorial Service Award for its community service for numerous events, including Family Swim Night, Senior Bingo, Movie Night, and Yountville Little League. Sharon Stensis also was recognized this year as the Chamber's Citizen of the Year for her contributions to the town as owner and editor of the Yountville Sun. Restaurateurs and chefs like Bob Hurley, Jeff Steen, and Kevin Miller continuously say yes when asked to provide for community-based events. That dedication includes when Jeff and Pacific Blues used their own anniversary party to raise money for the Pathway Home Residential Treatment Program for veterans with post-traumatic stress and traumatic brain injury. Alman Bundy leads by example to support not only his Vietnam Veterans of America Local Chapter 702, but all veterans who need a helping hand. Many other residents of the Veterans Home, like former Allied Council Officers Ed Olson and Ed Warren, and incoming Chair Don Moore, are dedicated to representing the residents, beautifying the historic grounds, and lobbying for much-deserved quality living conditions and services. Local Stan Jones became Veterans Home interim administrator after the first home leadership change in more than thirteen years. Along with Stan, many of us are now monitoring the California Department of Veterans Affairs' search for a replacement, as well as its ongoing facilities master plan review. Kimberly Cook and Nancy Gates are part of a group who champion visual arts, live music, and literacy programs, which led to the formation of the Yountville Arts Commission, arguably the most robust public art effort in the entire valley. Longtime Yountville residents Lupe Kicking Woman and Debbie Alter Starr, along with friends, came to this council in September representing our town's cultural diversity to accept a proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. The town also has led with action, implementing energy-saving measures like our methane recapture system and solar panels at several public facilities. We also have installed drought-tolerant landscaping at Town Hall and throughout town, all to reduce carbon emissions and to save water. I also had a unique opportunity this year to travel to Beijing, China, to visit officials in China's Ministry of Commerce to promote Yountville's tourism and wine brands. This is still only a partial list of those who continue to give of themselves for our community, but I wanted to highlight them because we should not lose focus on what makes Yountville so unique. Now I'll list some of the achievements in two thousand and thirteen, and at the same time, I want to thank our town staff for all they do to continue to serve the residents of Yountville. Thanks in large part to the revenue generated from our visitors through our local businesses, several town streets were resurfaced, park restrooms were renovated, and utilities were undergrounded. We saw growth in our park and recreation programming and funded capital projects and/or employee pension obligations above minimum levels. A project critical to the safety of residents and town staff finally became a reality as we completed a multimillion-dollar seismic renovation of this Town Hall, all the while preserving the heritage of the town's old schoolhouse. The town supported the launch of the Napa Valley Performing Arts Center at Lincoln Theater, year three of the Napa Valley Film Festival, extended hours for the Napa County Library Yountville Branch, and new Art Walk installations. Directional wayfinding signs have started to be installed along Washington Street to help guide visitors and residents as they walk through town. Online registration now is available for our park and rec programs, and you can pay your water bills online as a convenience to our residents. The town council and many staff are helping reduce labor and material costs by going paperless and converting to these digital tablets. The public works and planning departments have undergone a reorganization to add efficiencies to our workforce. Part of that organizational change was due to the retirement of Bob Tierney after twelve years as Planning and Building Director. In September, Yountville said goodbye to Raz Gallery's Art Glass, a retail fixture in town for twenty-three years, and owner Rhonda Scherer, a friend of many and co-founder of Yountville Arts. This past year, we also welcomed new businesses, including The Countryside, Heston Cookware and Wine Tasting Room, and R&amp;D Kitchen. In two thousand and fourteen, the town continues to be financially stable. We operate within a balanced budget while maintaining and improving our infrastructure and our public services. We grow closer still to build-out with fewer than a dozen undeveloped lots in town. The first homes are under construction in the Vineyard Oaks subdivision on Stags View Lane, and we expect the development of two commercial parcels in North Yountville in the coming months. Two other ongoing projects of note are the proposed expansion of Yountville Community Church, about which a decision is expected later this month, and a possible annexation request of the commercial portion of Domain Chandon connected to the town's wastewater system. Today, water conservation is of even greater importance, given our statewide low-water supply. We should all work together to reduce our water use and lower the risk of mandatory water rationing. As we plan to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of incorporation in two thousand and fifteen, a continuing challenge is maximizing our opportunities. We should continue to plan for our future with thoughtful and experienced town leadership, smart investments, support from local nonprofits and service organizations, and individual volunteerism. We need to find ways to reach new residents of all ages to engage and participate in Yountville's evolution. Thanks to all of you who have helped build the foundation of our community. Let's keep up the effort so this jewel we call home continues to shine brightly for all to enjoy. And I thank you for letting me share some of my thoughts. So with that, we will move ahead to our first public hearing. I'll stop talking, and we will let staff start with our first hearing on a request for Maison Marie temporary use. Start with the staff report.
Good evening. The subject parcel is an approximately twenty-two-thousand-square-foot vacant parcel at the north end of Yountville located between Maison Marie on the south and North Block Hotel on the north. And the applicant Maison Marie would like to temporarily use the site for the placement of some storage and office uses in anticipation of losing these functions at the Stewart Parcel across the street. And as you know, the Stewart Parcel is approved for a tasting room café and bookstore, and a building permit has been submitted for that property, and we would expect that they break ground sometime this spring. When they do so, Maison Marie will lose its lease and need to vacate that area and relocate its off-site storage and office functions. Maison Marie is operating under a six-month temporary use approval that allows the placement of three storage containers on the property and the use of the parking lot for, or the site for parking for employees and guests, as well as for special events. And while the three storage containers were never placed on the property, it has been used for parking, and so we consider the six-month period to have been triggered, and that will expire sometime in March. This new permit would transition seamlessly for the, for an extension of the use. And so the applicant proposes the three storage containers here that you see on the left-hand side of the slide, and those would be at the rear of the parcel. This is option A, and it shows a approximately fourteen-hundred-square-foot trailer in blue that would be located to the east of those containers. And at the front of the parcel, you see added gravel in an area that could be used for parking. Two options are presented by the applicant, and I'll mention that this is the applicant's preferred alternative for the office structure because of its proximity to Maison Marie and the fact that it would be shaded by these trees you see in planned perspective during the summer months. Option B moves the trailer to the north property line and adjacent to the commercial lodging use. And this was an option that came out of the ZDRB, and I'll go into more detail with that in a minute. So the purpose of the three containers is for Maison Marie's off-site storage, and the trailer would be used for occasional workspace for six employees that work out of the adjacent Maison Marie, but it would also have conditioned space for art storage as well. Vehicular and pedestrian access to the site would be gained through the south driveway you see here, and it would accommodate daily parking for Maison Marie employees and guests, and also the occasional special events. And those would occur both on the grunt, front gravel portion and on the paved section at the rear of the parcel. The applicant is proposing new landscaping in three areas shown here at back of sidewalk and the two triangle planters that exist mid-parcel. And the purpose of these planters would be to improve the appearance of the site and to offer some level of landscaping for screening of the different structures, although it is just conceptual at this stage, and a plant palette has not been proposed. So the applicant is seeking to leave the containers and the trailer in place for the period of time needed for the owners of the property, which is RH or Restoration Hardware, to obtain entitlements for the development of parcel and then move into construction. So we took this project to the Zoning and Design Review Board in November of last year, and there were two members of the public that spoke on the proposal. One neighbor was concerned about the location of the trailer, shown here in option A, at the south property line, and the reason being that there's a four-to-five-foot differential engraved between the subject parcel and the Burgundy Commons driveway. And he thought that this would create a walled-off effect, and it is the reason the applicant has submitted an alternative to address that. The second issue that was raised was the impacts of Maison Marie to the Burgundy Commons neighborhood and the fact that limousines and guests and different visitors to Maison Marie oftentimes continue the other direction on the private one-way driveway, and that the neighbors felt that this was impacting the neighborhood. And I'll get into both those issues a little later on. But the ZDRB did recommend, on a vote of four-zero, to recommend that the town council approve the temporary use permit, recognizing that it served in need of an existing business in town. And they did recommend some conditions of approval, that the temporary use be limited to a twelve-month period, and that prior to the expiration of the twelve-month period, the applicant would need to provide proof that entitlements have been secured and a building permit had been submitted for the RH development before an extension would be granted, in order to put some, some reasonable bounds on that temporary use. As you know, staff can grant administrative approvals for temporary uses for a period up to six months, and that's the reason we approved the three storage containers. But council approval is required for temporary structures up to a year, and the code section on temporary structure states that in no case shall a temporary structure be approved for a period of longer than a year. The whole idea is it serves a, a limited temporary purpose and that it isn't a longer ongoing thing. So staff has just a couple of concerns that we'd like to raise, and these have all been incorporated into conditions of approval. One is the location of the trailer that I've already mentioned. In the original location, option A, the one preferred by the applicant, it does block the three storage containers at the rear of the parcel, and will really work to minimize as much as possible the impact to Washington Street and the right-of-way. The location may result in a larger impact visually to the neighborhood at Burgundy Commons, but the option to move the container to the north side of the parcel, while it increases the distance or separation, it makes all of the temporary structures visible from Washington Street. So staff doesn't have the answer to this. We ask that you discuss it and, and choose the placement when you make, when you discuss this later on. One other item of concern to staff relates to the frontage improvements of the property. And as you can see here, the vacant parcel is the only one at North Washington that hasn't been brought up to the current town standard of the concrete sidewalk and more formal curb and gutter. It still has the railroad tie and a sidewalk width that doesn't meet the standard. And when staff took this to the ZDRB, we were suggesting that the applicant install full curb gutter and sidewalk for the temporary use, the reason being that they would be bringing building occupancy onto the site rather than mere storage, and that they are inviting vehicles and pedestrians to use the site. So in terms of safety, we thought it was a reasonable request for the development. The ZDRB felt that that, that it shouldn't be necessary for a temporary use of a year. So we've revised our recommendation to tonight, and we're recommending that the applicant simply pave this one section here, this eight-foot section that happens to be on the north block parcel, which is the adjacent parcel. The reason that it was left undone was based in reliance upon the previous owner's plans to develop the site with a restaurant and a looped driveway, and the looped driveway transition apron was in this location, so it was going to be done at that time. It remains undone to this point. And although it would be done when RH develops the parcel, we think that it's the minimum necessary to prepare the site for the pedestrians that will be invited onto the property, and we've included that as a condition of approval. Here's a close-up of that section. Another concern of staff is the appearance of the parcel, given the fact that it's been vacant for so long and just really hasn't been maintained to a developed standard, which is expected. However, we are suggesting that the applicant relandscape certain areas to at least mitigate some of this impact and to screen the structures. This would be one area at back of sidewalk that would have a new five-foot-wide planter, and then with the two mid-block, it should improve the appearance of the parcel and really make it seem more tended to and less neglected. And granted, that isn't the applicant's fault that it's, it looks like this, it's just a result of it being undeveloped. The last issue of concern for staff is one that was mentioned by the two neighbors, and that's the impact of Maison Marie on the adjoining residential neighborhood. And in this aerial photograph, you can see how the parking lawn and driveway connects with the driveway. And at the end of the parking lot at the mouth of that driveway, there are two signs that indicate one-way, do not enter, and private drive, no through traffic. And these signs were a requirement of Maison Marie, and the intent was that it would mitigate potential traffic impacts to the residential neighborhood. These signs can be disregarded if you're a limousine that pulls in and it's easier to pull forward without getting caught. Reverses backing up, and that's partly due to the fact that there's no physical barrier. And we know that the Homeowners Association has been in discussions with installing a gate that would be motion-censored on the inside, so it would provide that level of protection. They've had some bids that are quite high, and we're recommending in the staff report that Maison Marie make a one-time contribution of seventy-five-hundred dollars to the installation of this gate in order to mitigate the impacts of Maison Marie on the adjoining neighborhood. And this would simply just be a one-time contribution. The maintenance and upkeep and all further activity with the gate would be the responsibility of the Homeowners Association. So I've included those as proposed conditions of approval, and we do support the temporary use of the property to support Maison Marie and a business that is in need of, of storage and office, provided that the conditions are included. Thank you.
Thanks. Any question of the staff report? Councilmember Moller?
Yeah, I have a, a question. You, staff is recommending a twelve-month time period here, and in the staff report it said because that's when they probably need to move out of the Stewart property, which will likely start development in the spring of two thousand and fourteen. Now, I know we've heard all these things before, but we've also have quite a bit of experience in knowing what best-laid plans certainly don't get laid very well sometimes. So when, so my question is, when would the clock start if we agree to a twelve-month period of time?
I'm suggesting that the clocks start on the twentieth, which is the day after the current six-month use stops, and that's because of the parking use that will have been ongoing. And even though that isn't a temporary structure, that is temporary use of the lot.
Which they never enacted.
They enacted it through the parking, but not with the structure.
So February twentieth?
March twentieth.
March twentieth, the, the clock would start and run for, for twelve months. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions about Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. So, just so I get it straight. So they've been utilizing this, although not for the other conditions, or the permitted uses temporarily, which would include the three storage containers. They are using it today for parking, or it's being used today for parking, whether it's Maison Marie or someone else, because I see other vehicles on that property, but it's already being used for the past six months in this condition, correct?
Correct, except for those storage containers.
Correct.
Those were never.
Okay. So granting another twelve months technically is an eighteen-month, even though they decided not to choose to use the first six months for their storage containers.
Correct.
That's my first question, just to make sure I understand timing. They prefer option A, which is keeping, on the south side of the parcel, the, that's the applicant's preferences for option A, I think that's what I read, is, do you know off the top of your head which, which option gets more parking out of that, out of that parcel, or is it the same number?
Well, I think the parking with option A is easier to use, the parking on the north end of the paved parking lot.
Right.
Because there's, it's just more open, and of course, the front half is usable in either option.
But they're going to pave it, and so.
They won't be paving it as part of the temporary use.
Using gravel or whatever.
Correct.
Okay. So for, for both of those options, do we know which one would net more parking, or is it roughly equivalent?
Roughly equivalent, although option A probably gets you a few more if you look at these two different.
Scales. Scales, not my friend. My, my only reason for asking is that in the north part of town.
Probably pretty equal.
Yeah, probably equal, okay, because we've got such a parking issue in the north part of town, and I'm assuming this will be open to the public, which has been discussed.
Not open to the public, used for Maison Marie and for special events.
Only for those two?
Mm-hmm. Although it would relieve the parking burden on the adjoining neighborhood.
Sure, okay, and that's what I meant. And then with regards to the gutter and sidewalk, or not gutter, but the sidewalk paving component of the applicant, are they, I'm assuming they're here tonight?
They are.
Okay. So they'll be able to talk to a little about that. Okay, then I won't ask any more questions of staff, and that's, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor, any questions? For now. I do have a couple. That picture right there, actually, Sandra, are those utility boxes not in the very foreground, which is obvious, but in that, the parcel in question, are those utility boxes there in the?
Those are different vaults.
For this parcel that's in question?
Mm-hmm.
So one of the, not your formal recommendation, but one of the options was to do a cutout drop-off area there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that physically possible with those vaults there? Is that even considered an option?
We weren't really considering an option for the temporary use, but I would ask Graham about those vaults for a little more information.
I mean, the reason I'm getting to this might help craft your answer is, if we were to impose the requirement to create that drop-off area to help mitigate the impact on Burgundy Commons, could it be done in such a fashion that they would do it anyway for the next project? And I know that we can't necessarily force Maison Marie to do it on behalf of RH, but is it even an option?
These were installed as part of the undergrounding project with Hotel Luca and the other properties in the area. What we've learned recently is to adjust these to grade means you pretty much have to take out the whole vault, rebuild the vault, reconnect all the wires, so it's very expensive. The other thing is we'll want to have sidewalk here in the future, so they're set to the grade of the future sidewalk. So as a future condition of development of the project, then they would be required to put in curb, concrete curb gutter and sidewalk to match the grade of the utility vaults.
But if I understand, Sandra, your report is that you're not even, you're not asking that they have to create a new sidewalk on that portion, only the gravel portion that's in the middle of the photo there?
Full curb gutter and sidewalk would be deferred until RH develops, RH develops the site.
But you would be, and now.
Except for this one little small section here.
And did you say that that parcel there that's unbuilt is actually on North Block property?
This unpaved section, yes, in the foreground here.
So why isn't that North Block's responsibility to pave that as opposed to the neighbor?
Because the reason that it was left. Because the reason that it was left unpaved was part, was due to the pending development of the Hotel Luca site. Otherwise, it would have been paved.
So that condition can be attached to the parcel? There was an ownership change in the parcel, but that condition can go with the parcel?
Yes.
That's, okay. So that's why you're saying that, okay. Are there, let's see, get back to my points here. Are there other options? If you could go to either maybe A or B, because I'm going to ask if there are any other options to the location of, of the trailer and the containers. A was presented by the applicant, correct, as is. And B was a result of concerns from the neighbors in Burgundy Commons about the walling and massing, not of the containers, but of the trailer.
Correct.
Has there been any consideration that you're aware of to any other combination of location? Whether the trailer go where the containers are and the containers move or they only use two containers or any, any other combinations that you're aware of?
No, those haven't been proposed or really discussed. But the options are out there if you'd like to, to raise those and ask the applicant.
Okay. And, and a little bit to Councilmember Hall's question about the total number of parking spaces, there's no real requirement to have any number for this application, correct?
Well, based on the office space, there would be a level of spaces that would be required to, to serve that need. But there are ample numbers of spaces on site.
That would probably only be probably under five.
Six or eight or something like that.
Okay. Let's see if I had any others right now. I don't think I do. So with no other questions about the staff report, this is a public hearing and I'll start the hearing inviting the applicant to come forward with comments, presentation, or whatever you have planned.
Thank you, staff. Thank you, council for making time for us. Should I be speaking into this?
Yeah, if you could maybe raise that up just a little bit. Mr. Polanski, thank you.
I'm Michael Polanski and I've been in this room a number of times and typically when I've been in the past, I was wearing my Maison Marie hat. So I was the creator and developer of Maison Marie, which has been successful.
I think he's going to turn it on for us.
Is that better? There we go. All right, I'll start over. I'm Michael Polanski. I am the creator and founder of a business here in town called Maison Marie Napa Valley. We opened that up about five and a half years ago. It's been a, a successful project for us and we're pretty excited about all aspects of that. Tonight, I'm actually here wearing my RH hat, Restoration Hardware. I, we've entered into a, a pretty interesting partnership with them and I've also been asked to act on their behalf with regards to the property that was acquired next door to Maison Marie. Just so everybody knows, I have Mikhail, Daniel and Mick here with me tonight, who are kind of my three senior guys that, that run Maison Marie. Mikhail runs the overall operations, Daniel runs everything having to do with our private clients, and Mick is our gallery director. So they're all very involved. We've got a couple of slides to take you through, but I want to address some of the comments first that were said, so I just want to maybe clarify and give some context. First of all, we're almost completely indifferent as to where the containers go and the trailer goes. So we're totally flexible about that. We chose a spot because we were told we had to choose a spot for the purposes of this and that, I guess that that makes sense. So based on nearness to where, you know, any foot traffic would be, that's why we chose option A. Option B was proposed by the neighbors. We want to be respectful of that, although when we stand out there, we don't really see that much of a difference. So whatever the town tells us, we're totally flexible. So we're, we don't have a, we don't have a big issue there. The work trailer is the light blue, that, that's the important one. We applied for the other containers. I doubt we will use three, we may only use one. And part of it is just, we won't know until we get it on the property and, and figure out how much space we need. And we wouldn't do it at all if we weren't losing the space at Stewart. And there is no other office space and there's no other storage space in the town of Yountville. So that's why we're even in this position. So option A, continues to talk about that. And then one other comment, just in terms of context, this is in the report and it's come up a number of times with regards to the limo traffic. And we're kind of perplexed by this, but the language has been oftentimes limos will go down the wrong way. And I just want to start off by saying that I've been there for five and a half years. I have never once seen a limo go down the wrong way. All three of the gentlemen here tonight, I've asked the same question and they can tell you themselves, have never once seen a limo go the wrong way. I've reached out to the only three people that I know that are in Burgundy Commons. Shane, who has the property directly behind us, he has never seen a limo go down that road. I asked, reached out to Marie, as usual, she did not return my email, she hasn't returned phone calls. And I reached out to Sean, who I have a nice relationship with. And the only time that he would say that he has seen one was the example that he gave. And it was, he mentioned it was one limo driver two different times. So this concept of oftentimes is a little bit perplexing because we're not sure where that's coming from. So I just want to make sure that, that we kind of put that on the table. Having said all that, we're really excited about kind of the next phase of where we're going and being able to kind of work with RH on this lot next door. And so a couple of things about that. We, one of the things in this picture, you'll see this picture looks a little bit different than the picture we saw earlier. We've, my team at Maison Marie has fully taken responsibility for the lot and we are keeping it groomed and cleaned. And this is the first time it's been groomed and cleaned in probably six years. So, and technically, that's not really our responsibility, but we're happy to do it and it is our neighbor. Now that, now that we kind of control that lot, we've been doing that. We had asked our neighbors that had control of it prior and it more or less went ignored. So we are now keeping it groomed and cleaned. And that's the condition that we would actually like to leave it in, rather than having to do landscaping and plants that are going to cost money and frankly, I'm not sure make it look any better. We would just propose that we keep it groomed and clean and, and keep it in that condition. But the biggest thing for me is I, I'm, I'm very confused as to why the sidewalk, if we can go to the next slide, why the sidewalk, this portion of the sidewalk is being included. We're, we're simply asking to put a temporary office and some temporary storage on the RH lot and to make up for the space that we're going to lose. And right here. That line was there, is the property line. So this patch of sidewalk is not on the RH lot, it's not on the Maison Marie lot, it's on the North Block lot. And we have no business relationship and we have nothing to do with North Block, other than the fact that Mikhail actually lives there. So that's really our only connection. We love them, we have a nice relationship, but I'm, I'm a little confused as to why it's even on here as a condition of, of us having to ask for anything. So I'll just, I'll, I'll leave it at that. If we go to the next slide, this is the condition of it. It's level, it's smooth. Frankly, it's not much different than what the back of Maison Marie looks like. If you've been in the back of Maison Marie where the tables are, it's almost the same condition. I'll use, we use decomposed granite. This is, this is dirt and rock, but it's at the same smooth grade. It's, it's, you know, somebody could roll a wheelchair across that, a bicycle. And in fact, we went out there to, to sweep it up, there was probably about another three feet of asphalt that was covered in gravel that you wouldn't have been able to tell because it just kind of smoothed over. If we can go to the next slide. So, and again, this is just showing the, the connection between the existing sidewalk in front of North Block onto that asphalt. And again, it's a smooth transition. I, I'm not saying it shouldn't be repaired, it should be repaired, but I think that there might be an appropriate time. And again, I don't think it should be RH's responsibility or Maison's responsibility. It, it probably ought to be North Block's, but if it is determined that it should be RH's responsibility as part of the development of the lot, it probably ought to be tied to the development of the lot, not to putting a temporary trailer on the lot. Because it's not determined yet where driveways are going to go, where entrance is going to be, none of that is determined. I can share a little bit about what the thinking, the early thinking is, but none of that's determined. And, and so when that gets determined, it probably isn't a big thing just to, just to coordinate it at that time, if the council feels that it ought to be part of that. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. On the sidewalk, we'll go to the next slide. This is the entryway that goes past Maison Marie. These are our parking spaces here. Those are the two signs that we're talking about. The unit that you can just barely see on the left is Shane's unit, one of the gentlemen that I talked to. But this is where people come in and either park or people come in and drop off. And I have seen resident, people that are residents here go down this way and park, even though I haven't seen limos or buses. But I have seen residences go down there on a couple of occasions, just in the last month. The other thing I want to point out here, just on a, on a personal note, you know, we've, we want to be good neighbors. It's part of who we are as people, it's part of who we are as a, as an organization. But I'll point out, you can see where the asphalt is cut. And when I was putting Maison Marie in and put the parking lot in, I went to the homeowners and said, you know, they own all this right here. We have a, we have a easement over it. And I said, we're, we're going to pave our parking lot and we'd love to talk to you guys about paving this area here at the same time. Because I was told by my contractor that this is really degraded. It, water will seep in, it'll then eventually seep down under ours and cause problems for us. And so I went to them and said, look, why don't you do this? I'll, we'll just figure out what the cost is and on a square foot, you don't have to manage it, we'll take care of everything. And we'll just, you know, you pay for that percentage of it on a square foot basis. And they declined, which was their right, and said, we're going to repave everything in, you know, the next year or so. And that should help. And I said, okay, that's, that's fine, that's your choice. It took them a couple of years, they came back and they repaved. And as you can see, they repaved everything but the area right next to Maison Marie. And we had no phone call, we didn't even know they were going to repave. But, but the one area that they left, and if you go to the next slide, same thing. They repaved everything except the area that we had talked about once before. And this is a, a pattern that I had with, with the homeowners. If we go to the next slide, same thing, you can just see just jagged cuts. And then the next slide. So the other issue is the fence. There, they have a fence that sits, that wraps around our property. When we moved into the property, we had a nice conversation, the fence was falling down. I said, look, we'll, we'll help, you know, we'll, we'll manage the project, we'll split the cost. We replaced probably 40 feet of fence. I got two bids, one from a contractor, one from our handyman. We did the handyman because his bid was about half. I paid for it and when I went to get reimbursement, was paid a portion of it and told that's all they were going to pay me, even though we had agreed to do it and even though we did all the work. That was a couple of years ago. Fast forward, I've replaced probably three other sections of the fence on my own since then. And then recently, we were approached by Shane, the homeowner who owns this unit directly behind us, who's a nice guy. And the fence literally was falling down. We had to have posts to hold it up. And, and Shane had new tenants moving in and said, hey, we really would like to get this thing replaced. Will you help? And I told him the history and said, look, I'll help you. But understand that this is, this has been my history with the homeowners, doesn't feel very good. And I get no return phone calls and I get no return emails, but I'll, happy to be a good neighbor, Shane, I'll work with you. So we just replaced about 64 feet of fence. And in this case, I said, Shane, you pay for it and I'll reimburse you. So we're in that transaction. That's pretty much now been done. If you go to the next slide, the next slide. And that's, we've replaced the fence again. So we have now replaced the entire fence. I only say this because this whole concept of the gate, you know, again, we want to be good neighbors and, and, you know, do our, do our part. But I've had no return phone calls, no return emails from the homeowners association, literally for years. And no one has come to me to talk to me about a gate. No one has told me that there's a need for a gate. And only it was through this process that I have found out that somebody is even thinking about a gate. And I still come back to the question is, do we even need a gate? And then we can talk about who should pay for the gate. So that's my thoughts on, on the gate. And if we can go to the next slide. So just a little bit of history, we've been here for five and a half years. And again, we want to be good neighbors and we want to do the right thing for the community. When we built Maison Marie, I forget the number of parking spaces that we were required to do, but we actually built more than that. So I think we added another four parking spaces on above what our requirement was. Because we wanted to do the right thing, we knew parking was, was one of the issues in the town. So we used more of our real estate to add more parking. Next slide, please. This enclosure, this building, or what looks like a building, is a structure that is built around an HVAC unit. And it's an HVAC unit that met all the, the town standards for decibel and sightlines and all that. And there are two units that are probably about the size of this, but on, but if you laid it down. And when they went in, they didn't look right and they were louder than what we thought they were going to be, even though it met all the town requirements. And immediately, it felt bad. And immediately Sean, who's right, that's his house right there, and then one of our neighbors across the street, you know, it immediately impacted them. And on our own time and our own money, we went back to the town and said, we'd like permission to build this structure to block that sound. We weren't required to do it, but we initiated that to be good neighbors. And it's been, you know, I think it's been appreciated by everybody and certainly our, our guests appreciate it as well. And now it's been grown over with Ivy, which was the hope, and so it kind of disappears. But it does take a chunk out of our real estate. But we did it because it was the right thing to do. Next slide. For the town, a couple of years ago, I found out about an opportunity, brought this opportunity to the town. This is a sculpture by an artist named Jed Novat, one of the top sculptures, sculptors in the world. This piece sold at auction to one of his collectors for a million dollars. This was donated to the town of Yountville through my efforts. And then separately, we had to get it here and install it. And the next slide, these are all the people that helped out. I forget the exact cost, Steve could probably tell us, but it was in the 50,000-plus range. And so Steve made a lot of efforts, personal efforts. I made a lot of personal efforts to raise the money to install this sculpture. About half the names on there are people that I personally reached out to that wrote checks to kind of get this thing installed. So again, we're happy to go to bat for the town and, and do the right thing for the town. Next slide. You know, we participate in the art walk. This is one of our artists down in front of Elagio, that piece has been installed, it's been there a little over a year now. And the next slide. And this is what I purchased six years ago. And this is what we turned it into. So, you know, we took something that was, you know, had seen better days, was kind of starting to look rundown, you know, not a particularly great street appeal to it, and turned it into what we think and what we hope is probably one of the nicest buildings in town. What you don't see is that there is a curb and a sidewalk here that we also paid for to put that in. So again, we're happy to do that when, when appropriate and when it makes sense. And then the next slide. And then this is the future. So Maison Marie's over here on the left. This is an artist's rendering. Don't get stuck on this. This has not even been put forth to the town yet in, in terms of any specific ask. But, but this is, you know, conceptually, kind of where we're going. Just another beautiful addition to kind of where the town is, what it'll look like. And then an aerial shot. Same thing, that's Maison Marie on the left. That's the RH property developed on the right with the parking in the back. And I want to end here because again, the gate, whether, you know, the first question on the gate is, do we need one? Based on our experience, I would say not, there's not one needed. Second is, who should pay for it? You know, that's an interesting question. But one of the things I would say is, that probably too ought to be tabled until we figure out exactly what's going to happen here. Because one of the concepts is doing something different with this parking. And there may, RH does valet parking at most of their galleries these days. And there may be a way to do valet that then takes care of whatever that is back there. And I'm not sure what that looks like today. But again, my, my suggestion would be, is if it is important to attach this to some development on this lot, let's attach it to the place and time when that lot's being developed, not when we're just putting a trailer and a container on there for, for short term. And I think that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are, does the council have any questions of the applicant?
I have questions.
Yeah, Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I, I have a, a couple of questions. One's kind of a curiosity question, since you brought it up, you said one of your employees lives at the North Block Hotel. I wasn't familiar that we had any of our hotel rooms that were rented out to residents.
I think they have a few that are low income, right?
Residential units, not hotel.
No hotel, I'm talking about hotel.
Right. But there are resident, there's a residential unit at the hotel.
Oh, it's a residential unit.
Separate from the hotel.
At, at the hotel, okay, that answers that question. And second, so when you first were developing Maison Marie, obviously, you didn't really have a, a need for office space that's now arisen or, or, or storage space. So i- is that because your business has grown that now this, these additional requirements have come about?
Well, we did. We just had, we had it in different places. And we, in fact, we had it across the street to, we found out, we, we were misinformed by the landlord across the street that he had a, that he had a office environment that was allowed allowed by the city, even though technically it was residential, there had been a business use of it for the entire time we were there. And when that gentleman moved out, we moved in, and then we were evicted, because we were told that we could not use that for business, even though it had been used as business for years.
Yeah, we remember that well.
Yeah. Well, again, it's, we were, we were misinformed by this individual, but that was our office, and that was our storage. And so, from very early on.
Okay, so that leads into my next question. So, and I know this is just, you know, pie in the sky idea of what's going to happen here, so, but, as long as you brought it up, so is the intent that future office space that Masonry's going to need, and future storage would be somehow part of this next, this RH property?
I would hope so, yeah. It's up to, yeah, I mean, I-
Is that how you plan to continue this when that does get developed?
They are very well aware of the need, and it's kind of the top of the list of, when I've talked to them about, you know, the senior guys over there, about what we need to include here, that's top of the list.
So that would be the plan on how you would continue after this temporary use?
Yes.
Okay, I think those are my only questions right now.
Any other questions of the applicant? Councilmember Dornbecker?
I did have one. Good evening. I'd like to find out, you made reference earlier to the future development, and you said that you had an idea of what it might be, although it hadn't been, I wondered if you'd expound on that.
Sure. And again, keep in mind, RH is a publicly traded company, so this information has not been shared publicly, but conceptually, it's been touched on. And essentially, the concept is a much more edited and curated version of what you might find if you walk into a Restoration Hardware gallery today. And in fact, if you walk into any of their mall stores, that's not really what their business looks like. You'd have to, and I'm happy to share pictures of it, but what they built in Scottsdale, Arizona, what they built in Houston, and most importantly, what they built in Boston recently, which is a 40,000-square-foot gallery. The concept here is to do an edited and curated selection of that that is focused on kitchen, outdoor, tabletop, tableware, chefs, everything having to do with kind of the food and wine culture that Yountville is, has kind of made famous. And really, it's important to the team that's involved, and in particular, CEO Gary Friedman, who is also now has a house here in Yountville. Yountville is the birthplace for this, and gives the authenticity and the authority within the RH brand as they roll this concept out. The only room in the house that Restoration Hardware has not been in has been the kitchen. And so that's what's coming. It is public that they hired the gentleman who was the president of Williams Sonoma last year, Richard Harvey was hired in June. Richard is more or less my partner in, as we kind of go down this path, and Richard is out there busy putting together what that collection will look like. So that much is public, and they've shared pieces of that. But we honestly haven't sat down to do what the specific plan, I can't tell you what the finishes would look like, I can't tell you what the floor plan, you know, we haven't, we haven't gotten to that point to then bring it to the town, but that's coming soon.
May I follow that up with, just to, to Councilmember Muller's point, you have had discussions with them, though, about having your offices in that structure and-
Absolutely. Yeah, no, they're very well aware that there is no storage space in town, that there's no office space in town, and that's part of what needs to be here. And so we've had conversations about, do we, do you go down into the ground and build a basement that kind of helps do that? And I've actually had preliminary talks with the town about, are we allowed to do that? How does that work? So that's very much part of, kind of, the concept.
Thank you.
Yep.
Vice Mayor, questions?
Michael, good evening. One question, you referred to the easement of that driveway, if I'll call it that, where you're, to go in and you can park.
Yep.
Is, do you have any responsibility for, I mean, you would actually constitute probably a majority of just the actual traffic of people coming in and out.
Sure.
Is, do you not have any maintenance responsibility for that drive aisle?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, it may be somewhere in the ownership agreement, but it's never been raised as a conversation, but all I know is that we have an easement, and we're allowed to use it.
Okay.
And when I, when I did bring up the sharing of that part of the property for asphalt, that wasn't part of the conversation at all. They didn't bring it up and say, well, actually, you should do that. They just said, we don't want to do it right now, we're going to do it in a year or two.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have any questions at this time, I think, do you have anybody else from your team that you were expecting to speak, or shall I open it to the rest of the public?
No, they're here to answer questions if we get into some specific detail.
Okay, great, thank you for your presentation.
Sure, thank you.
And I will invite any members of the public that are here tonight, if you would like to share your thoughts on this item, now would be the time. Anyone? No? Seeing no other members of the public?
Mayor, council, I do have a few clarifying questions to respond to the comments that were made by Mr. Polanski. And I think this is a fair question to look at what level of conditions, and it's something staff has wrestled with, but I think it's also fair that we understand the situation and where we're coming from. One, the site had an approved plan with VITA, and it was an active construction site and was demolished. The history and relationship of this project almost go back, not quite as far as the successful development that Michael and his team have done with Masonry, but there is a little bit of, I think, connecting the dots. It's helpful to understand. And then subsequently, when that situation imploded, the building site was demolished, it was left in a unfinished state, and then it began, and was in use by the Hillstone Company, by the prior property, on a temporary use permit for one year that the council approved as a staging site, and overflow parking. At that point in time, the owners, at that, then at that point in time indicated the same conversation that they would improve the street frontage at that point in time when they knew what they were going. And the reason I share that with you is, we're now reaching, not necessarily by Michael and RH's situation, but the community is reaching five years now of what should have been a finished and safe, secure curb sidewalk frontage. And that's where we're trying to look at. That is a risk management issue from the town, and that's where we're coming from. And certainly, there is a connection where the property owner, North Block, at that point in time was working with the approved VITA plans, and the agreement was, hey, let's be practical, we're going to do this, let's wait. Well, we've been waiting, and I think the staff is certainly willing to look at something like a paving asphalt rather than a full concrete. And we certainly support that, if they are coming forward with an imminent development plan, we can defer the full curb and sidewalk to that alternative. The discussion about the gate came up, and it is a triggering, and I do want to explain that one of the things that's different about the proposed use is adding the office. Because when you add the office, you have the element where you're encouraging and engaging the traffic to come out. They need to walk down the driveway, head to one of the sidewalks, and based on their, what would indicate, most of them will probably move south to Masonry, especially in the case of special event parking. So it's just, that's part of the connection there, is that property has now been used for six months for special event and employee parking. It's anticipated for another year that that use will continue, plus a temporary office and storage. So that's where staff is coming from, in terms of looking at that and having that complete. I think the gate issue is a legitimate discussion on timing, not necessarily probably when, but is it now? And to be perfectly honest, staff at all levels, including myself, I think a missing component was actually delivery trucks are probably one of the worst offenders, along with limos. And staff have seen them go the wrong way. So I won't say, I don't know this to frequency, but I will know that it occurs. So it is an issue that needs to be discussed. I do agree that perhaps timing of whether it's a condition of the temporary use, or it's a condition of the full development by RH is a logical question for council consideration. But given, again, the extended situation where we're going to be going another 12-plus months on the site, it's a triggering event and activity for the council, and as such, it's one of those that this is an appropriate opportunity for the council to look at what's appropriate to ensure an appropriate use and the impact on the adjacent properties.
So if I understand you correctly, the reason this wasn't triggered by Hillstone, for example, was they did not put a structure on the site. They took over use of it for construction parking and other parking, but you're saying the building, the staff building, not the containers? They were just doing containers, there would not, it would not be a triggering effect? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Muller?
Yes, I have a question.
And actually, before you continue, I want to just formally close the public hearing, and this will be the council deliberation. Go ahead.
So I have a question for our town attorney. So my first question, I'm assuming that because this is a temporary structure permit, that we are acting as planning commissioners at this point? Is that correct? Well, I'll give my second question, and if the answer is yes, are we required to make findings? Where, what does this fit? It's not an ordinance, so-
Right. Well, you're acting as the, as the town council. In terms of making findings, I don't believe we necessarily will need to. I don't believe there's any necessary appeal process or objection process, anyone, especially in light of the fact that no one's come forward this evening to object. In order to be able to be eligible to object, you would need to have to voice those objections tonight.
So we are, this is a planning commission activity for the council that we're doing tonight, and it's similar in how we act on conditional use permits, even though it's a temporary structure permit? That's where I'm confused.
Right. You're, if, in the resolution itself, there are, there are findings that articulate what the town council is, what criteria is being used by the town council.
Or what the staff is recommending.
Well, if the staff is recommending, and the town council, if they ratify or approve the resolution by that action, you would in fact be adopting and approving the findings that are contained in staff's recommendation.
But we could make alternate findings.
Yes.
So this is similar in how we would handle conditional use permit?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
So this is, you know, I've closed the public hearing, so this is time for deliberation from the council. So Councilmember Dornbecker, would you like to-
Is there an opportunity to ask any further questions?
Not of the public, no. You can ask staff if you need clarification, but the public hearing is closed.
All right, I'm going, I'd like to ask Sandra, is it possible that on the lot where the additional parking and that, you know, the, the storage areas and the, and the mobile unit for the offices, is it possible that that could accommodate people turning from that driveway and going back in a horseshoe to exit out the front of that?
It is constructed as a loop driveway. They currently have the north section blocked off, but it would be possible to, to use it in that manner. No, we're talking about the RH parcel, right?
Right.
But I think you're asking for people to access Masonry using RH loop driveway. Is that what you're asking?
Right, like the delivery trucks.
Not as currently constructed.
Not as currently constructed.
There's a wall because of the grade change. It goes, do you have a shot if it goes, it doesn't go all the way to the street, but it goes close?
But, Michael presented one here that I can use.
You can see some of it, so, yeah.
Oh, I see.
It goes down towards the street, but it doesn't actually hit grade even at the property line.
Thank you.
So I think to your question, if, if people were to park there, they'd have to walk all the way down the drive aisle to the, to the street and around to get onto Masonry.
Well, I was wondering if we could mitigate the, the impact on that drive in the back where people are turning and going down the wrong way by having signage that says, turn this way and go out through the undeveloped parking area.
Depends on, on who the violators are. If it's residents of Burgundy Commons, probably not, but if it's commercial use, more possible.
And it does represent an option upon the redevelopment of the RH site, because some of the changes that need to be made between the grade of the two parcels can be made then, and it can be coordinated and designed in, in a manner that best suits all three properties.
Well, that, that weighs heavily on me, because I do believe that whatever we decide now shouldn't really be too permanent, because who does know what RH is going to, to decide to develop? And I think that, I believe in dealing with what is, and, you know, spending the money to go ahead and put in a new sidewalk area and et cetera, if that's going to be then turned around and torn up, I think that's a waste. So I'm inclined to say that I, I don't think that those should be required. That's what I'm inclined to do. But I'm interested to hear what my colleagues and fellow council members feel.
So before I continue with that, I'm going to ask, Sandra, I want to make sure that we're going to give you answers to all the questions that you have. You're asking us to act on the request to have up to three trailers in an office building, and you're asking us for, if, if, if yes, a term. It's been requested for two years. Your recommendation is one year, and the ZDRB recommendation was one year. And that's our existing ordinance language.
Right, with the possibility of extending it if they meet certain conditions.
And another component is the development of that section of sidewalk that is now undeveloped, that's technically North Block property, but has been, in your opinion, attached to a development of use, is what I'll call it, on the RH parcel. So even though it's not a formal, final development, you're feeling that this is a triggering, as town manager said, a triggering event, so that it triggers that need for that piece? But you're willing to defer the rest of the sidewalk piece-
Correct.
-that would be technically triggered in this event as well?
Correct. And it should be noted that the one replacement section of sidewalk at North Block, we're suggesting it be asphaltic concrete, which is different than the, the higher-scale concrete.
And so, this issue of the gate, is that, and I don't remember if that was just a concern brought up from the public through ZDRB, or it's actually in your list of conditions?
It's included as a condition that arose from the ZDRB, from two members of the public. Staff really is going off of the, the concern of the neighbors rather than having really witnessed it ourselves, so-
If that is, you've written that into one of the conditions. I just couldn't remember if it was in there or just in the report. Are there other components to this that you need us to act on specifically?
Well, the landscaping should be something that you look at also.
Landscaping or not? Yeah. And the location of-
Of the trailer, yes.
-containers in trailer. I just want to make sure that we're covering everything. Okay, so with that, Councilmember Dornbecker, did you have comment at this time on those-
Could you recap this?
So we're talking about, do we, are we going to act on even approving up to three containers in an office building?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
The term of that use?
I would say one year. That's what I would say.
Sidewalk replacement-
We feel the possibility of extension.
Sidewalk replacement required at the northeast corner, it's not even of the parcel, but the adjacent parcel.
I would like to wait until, to hear what the rest of the council has to say on the sidewalk.
All right. The gate requirement for limited access to Burgundy Commons?
I would tend to feel that, since I do believe that probably residents of the, of the commons also go the wrong way on that, that there should be some participation in the commons in the financial aspect of that gate.
Is it of your opinion that you would require a gate as part of this application for use on the adjacent parcel?
That is not something that I would require.
But if, if it comes to pass, it is a requirement, it's your recommendation that it be a shared expense?
Exactly.
Okay. Landscaping on the parcel as screening, do you feel that?
I think that would be a very nice gesture on the town, on the part of the applicant.
And then do you have an opinion about the location of the containers and trailer?
Not at all.
Either of the options, or a different option altogether is, is open for you? Okay. Thank you very much for covering all those. I'll go to Councilmember Hall.
Yes, I, thank you. And I'd like to thank the applicant for sharing not just the images. I used to live across the street at 6706, so I'm familiar with the property prior to your moving in, and I remember the state of it. In fact, I think my dog entered that building at one point in time, and they had to bring him back over. But that said, I did have a question before- did have a question before I address the issues that we're going to be reviewing and determining tonight. With regards to the projected RH project and the expectation that they would be able to get an easement to improve the sidewalk, I mean, this is a parcel that's owned by North Block, is my understanding. Is that, is that confirmed? I mean, do we know where the property line is drawn? And so, the applicant, as I'm understanding the way we're writing the condition, would be required to get an easement to actually do any pavement? Is that correct?
No, the, that, the identification and the location of all that's identified, and it's just something that the work hasn't been concluded. An easement is not necessary. We have the easement for the public conveyance, if you will, for the sidewalk, so we have the ability to have it. And if, obviously, at some point, if it's not resolved, we will have to go back and take a different approach. I will share with you all that it did end up on our list by our risk management review as an area that we need to address.
And that's reasonable, but I, in some ways, it may be unreasonable to encumber the applicant to pave the sidewalk of another parcel. That, that might be an unreasonable expectation, although we could consider it a condition. I haven't made a judgment at that point, but just as a point of reference. As far as landscaping and beautify the property, if you're going to put trailers on the property, as beautiful as they may be, I think landscaping should be a condition. I will put that out there before I go back to the questions. I'm okay with either option. I think that, since I'm not really wholly sold on the fact that the applicant should be required to put a gate, I believe if there is a gate requirement by the remainder of the council, that we, they should be required to participate, and at no more than 50 percent. But I would suggest that, you know, I'm, I'm not really concerned with so much about the, the way that the housing authority there, or whatever we're calling the commons. I think that we should go with option B, because that's been requested, and that's something where there's some negotiation. At least the applicant is being considerate enough to be able to move, to meet certain conditions of the owners there, which we all are owners in this community, at least everyone at this diocese and many of you in the audience. So, I think that that should be considered, but I don't think that the lack of prior ownership responsibility to not pave or deal with the, with the sidewalk should encumber the applicant, is my opinion. I'm okay with up to three trailers. I think the one-year condition of temporary approval is okay. I hope that you will not meet the full 12 months, given that it sounds like you've already had the opportunity for six to use that. But I can recognize that business doesn't always move at the speed of light, and that we want to make sure you have the opportunity to be successful and put together a proper and complete project in the process. I think I've already mentioned about the sidewalk. I don't consider that a specific condition that we should include, given that they don't own that section of what the parcel is, but I won't be redundant. The gate, again, I don't think it's required, but if the overall approval for a gate is conditioned by the remainder or through the vote of this council, it should be a shared cost. Again, I think I suggested B. And landscaping, I know you guys have done a very nice job in front of your property. I think that you could certainly do a little bit to help beautify the, the property there. I'm also in agreement with Councilmember Dornbecker in that sidewalks would be great. It would sure be a nice improvement there. It would make people feel better about the whole project and the fact that we haven't had anything on that parcel since they tore down the building. I highly encourage you to consider it, but I don't think I would require it, and that's my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
The more I hear about the sidewalks, I think the more I get confused, too. So, that eight-foot section of the sidewalk that we're talking about, does the town own that because we have an easement? Does North Block own that?
The town has an easement that allows for the placement of the sidewalk. The property is owned by the individual property owner. In this case, the missing link is owned by North Block, but the approved plans with VITA allowed for that section to be deleted because they were sharing and working with the VITA development.
Okay, understood.
They were going to put that segment in as part of the VITA development.
Okay, so it seems very reasonable to me. It's time to tell North Block to fill in the sidewalk.
If that's the council's direction, we certainly can.
That's my direction. I can't, you know, make the applicant do it, but I guess I'm sending a condition to the town to get that sidewalk filled in, because I believe it's safety, and the rest of the stuff is there, and safety's always number one in our town, and I think it's time to fill that in.
But I do want to clarify for the council, because I think, Councilmember Moore, you bring up a good, the reason we're putting this on is the temporary use is a continuation that was granted when VITA was under construction. So, the intent that the town has, that that was going, we were going to be made whole. So, when we try to continue the existing uses, I just want to know so that everybody understands why we're looking at it, because it was something that the town expected to get.
Right.
And through a various series.
Right, no, no, I, I think the past history makes sense, but now that, you know, I think I've heard the other two council members, and I'm going to pretty much agree with them, so I'm going to be the three vote that he needs. I just want to make sure that we get that sidewalk put in the best way we can, even if it's a temporary asphalt concrete, because it might get put together. And to agree with Councilmember Hall, if you want to throw a little more money into some asphalt, we greatly appreciate it. So, but I definitely think we need to get that eight-foot section filled in. And yes, I'm fine with the three containers and the, and the office space. It looks like option B, since the applicant said he really doesn't care one way or the other, is probably how it's going to go, but however it goes, I'm not going to make it a condition for the, where the placement is, whatever kind of works out. Sidewalks taken care of, yes, I think I would make landscaping a condition of approval. You know, landscaping takes lots of different forms, so it could be, you know, good landscaping or bad landscaping, so I'll leave that up to staff to work out with the applicant. And the gate, that's very confusing, but I would not make that a condition of the approval at this time. So, and the clock starts on this March 20th for one year, and I'm going to be watching all these conditions very closely when the applicant comes back and wants something else later on, so be forewarned.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'll just go through the list quickly. I agree with most of what I heard. I, I'm fine with the three containers and the office. I do think site plan B is slightly preferable, just because it pushes everything more to the back of the lot. I also agree with what I've heard on the sidewalk extension. It's unusual that that's a sidewalk that's not finished. The, I mean, the VITA entitlement is, is history, right? I mean, there's no entitlement for that property anymore. There's no 130 seats for 16 parking spaces. I mean, it's all gone. So, in my opinion, that, whatever agreement was between the two property owners before, that has all evaporated, and, you know, if there's some other agreement we don't know about, that's, that's up for them to discuss. But if it's on North Block property, it needs to be addressed. I, I do not think, I will agree that the, the concept of the gate, I agree that that should not be part of this concept. I, I think the one thing that I'm struggling with even in this is, we're talking about, I, I know it's going into a neighborhood in town, but we're talking about two private property owners who have some level of agreement to use that driveway, and I don't even know who owns that driveway, if that's the, that's the property owners. They theoretically could say you're in breach of our easement agreement by going some way, I don't know, and just shut it off completely if they were so desirous. I don't know if they can do that or not, but in theory, they could. So, I think that, at least at this point, doesn't seem to me, I don't think we have enough information to, I don't want to mediate that dispute at this point. I do think the landscaping needs to happen, and you'll be happier because of it. And the last thing is one year. I strongly believe in one year, and our ordinances say a temporary structure is one year. So, my statement on that is, we're giving one year. I don't really know why we would come back and do it again for another year, because it's supposed to be temporary for a year. So, yes, I'm fine approving it for a year, but I, I don't want to see this for two years. I mean, it's, it's got a lot of things that we're not addressing that would be normally addressed in something that's more permanent, which is, in theory, over a year. So, I'm fine with this for a year, but I'm not fine with it for longer than that.
Thank you. Covered all the points.
I think so, too.
Thank you. And I'll follow up. I've kind of gone, gone back and forth about the sidewalk. I'll save that for last, in case I change my mind again. I, I support, I don't love the option B, but I support that as a, better than option A. Ironically, you, you brought up the impact on the south part of the parcel with the HVAC, and I see the two HVAC fans outside the trailer that would be right up next to one of the residents of Burgundy Commons. Not only the walling effect, but the noise of that. So, I would support moving it away from the residence. We've done that on many other parcels. Moving it away from a residence to put it closer to a fellow business, and option B does that. I would still even leave it open, especially if you're looking at fewer than three containers, to maybe change that configuration, but I think that can be left to staff also. If it means you rotate it to the back west side, so it's up against the highway, great. But I would say option B would be the leading layout, in my opinion. I agree with what most have said about no more than one year. I don't see this as a reason to find an, an exception to that maximum term. I think what we're talking about in terms of a possible extension is if, if development is imminent and there needs to be some period of time, I wouldn't automatically assume it would be another 12 months, but there could be some flexibility there. I would absolutely require landscaping. I am, as I'm sure we all are, sick of seeing construction vehicles, sick of seeing all types of vehicles, and I certainly don't want to see containers in, in the side of a trailer for a year, unscreened. You've got two, two landscape planners already in place that basically just need some plants to be replanted, and then some type of effect on the street frontage. I don't feel like a gate is, is appropriate for discussion on this application. I would see something maybe even as simple as a no-entry painted on the street, on that, that transition from your parking lot to the drive that's part of the private property. I do think that is a private property to private property issue. If, if the HOA is truly being negatively impacted, they need to take it up directly and, and have a conversation with you. I would not attach it to this application. So, it gets me to the sidewalk, and I, initially, I did feel like this is a triggering effect. I agreed with staff that you're now encouraging. While they're members of your, your staff, it's still public, being asked and told to go on-site, but if they were employees, and I forgive the one resident of North Block for this, if they were, if this was on the southeast corner, where all of the people that were transitioning from this RH parcel to Maison Re were having to cross that, I would feel differently. I think we should have required, as soon as the previous owner did not develop as expected, that we had required North Block to finish that job. I would support those that have said, "We need to get it addressed," and I think we just need to tell North Block it's their responsibility. I do think it is theirs. I think you may feel like you've kind of dodged a bullet on needing to redo that whole stretch of sidewalk, because that's where I was having some trouble. We are encouraging many more people to use that property, and now there's still an unfinished, somewhat safe sidewalk right across the front, so I'm willing to defer that for now. So, I can support, I think, staff's recommendations. The ones that we, if I heard correctly, that we are, are not supporting are the gate and the sidewalk, and then option B. So, is that, is that correct, that you're requiring landscaping, and I, I'm hearing that agreement, we're requiring no more than one-year use, and there seems to be agreement, and, and you didn't have a specific opinion on option A or B, but I think I'm hearing likely option B. Town Attorney, did you have...
Well, I just want to make sure it's clear, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council. There is a provision in the resolution, item six says that if construction has commenced prior to the expiration of the temporary use, which would be the 12-year...
12 months.
12, 12-month timeline, the temporary structure may remain in place for a period of construction. Is that something the council wants to allow or revisit, or not allow at all?
I'm going to go to either the Vice Mayor, or I think it was Councilmember Hall, who may have spoken specifically about not wanting this to go beyond the one year. That would potentially be allowed. Is there a...
I'll jump in.
Okay.
The applicant's intent when construction starts is for this to mostly transition over to a construction trailer. Construction sites can have a construction trailer, and in such a case, if Maison Re were to use it for office and storage, and it could serve that dual use, we would have no problem with it staying in place, because it is essentially a construction trailer, which we wouldn't regulate as part of a construction project.
But not the containers. The containers are considered separate.
Right, so I think we mentioned that it was only...
If the office trailer transitions to a construction trailer, staff is okay with that?
Perhaps we should be specific as to the trailer and not the...
Well, actually, I think the language is, because in this case, it indicates that a, if it is done that way, no additional separate construction trailer, and typically on a project of the size that is envisioned, a onsite construction office. So, what we're basically saying is, they have the ability to continue using that existing trailer as, but it has to serve as the construction site. They can't, their contractor is not able to bring another trailer like R&amp;D did and...
My question is, are the containers required to leave the parcel if it turns into a construction site? Is that temporary use halted?
Well, I think that was staff's intent, although the condition is ambiguous. It says temporary structures rather than trailer, but we'll be looking at a lot of stuff on the parcel at that point when they're trying to do construction, so I think it would be best to scale it down just to the trailer.
In the, in your language about the transition, so you would require that the, any, any containers that are storage containers either be removed, or they go through this process again, which would be, they want to, RH at that point would have to request use of storage onsite?
I want to offer a little, just typically, when we have an active construction permit, we work with the applicant, because much like we've had on our own project here, temporary construction containers are often necessary to maintain and properly store materials so they're not scattered about. So, the effort here...
That's completely different than the next-door neighbor having storage in those containers. That's not the same thing.
Correct, and what I'm saying there is, if we're talking about, the clarification that you might want to put in there is that all activity must transition to construction-related and not Maison reuse-related at that point in time.
But would there be an option, we're not able to take any more public testimony, but hopefully we'll talk through whatever your, your thought is. Is there an option, then, for the RH construction team to request storage that they can then share with Maison Re?
I, I think that would need to come forward, because that would be a very unique situation, because typically, when you have an active construction site, that team wants control of the site, and they don't want to be dealing with extraneous situations. So, I would say if the council's interest is having whatever is currently there be able to be used to support the active construction of RH, then we're okay. If you have a, and then the trigger would be if Maison Re needs to continue, because then I think they would need to bring that application forward, so it can be better vetted when it's understood, because clearly right now, we don't know anything, and based on what the applicant has indicated, we don't have a pending RH application, so it is really too premature to look at what that might look like and how many additional containers total.
No, but that's, I don't think that's really the relevant part of the, the relevant part that I understand, is that when, when RH begins development, if Maison Re still needs storage, they are going to have to come back with a new plan for storage.
That's what we just said.
Which could be on the RH site as, as it exists, but it would need a new application.
Correct, that's what we're saying. So, it can only transition for construction use.
Okay, so, does the whole council understand that dynamic that the town attorney identified appropriately?
I just want to make sure everybody was clear, and that the applicant, you know, so that what would happen is that 12 months from now, and there are structures there, what they're being used for, what their purpose, and yes, I would agree that if they are going to have structures that are earmarked for RH purpose as opposed to construction purpose, that that probably would need a new application.
Okay, so, given that, there would be one more change to your conditions, which would be changing the language... the language that, you want to try summarizing that, or shall I? That any approved temporary use ends upon the start of RH construction onsite?
Well, I think we'd be, I thought we'd be willing to allow the office use to continue as a shared use with the construction trailer, but the storage containers for Maison Re art would need to come back before you if they were to be onsite during construction.
I knew you were going to do a better job with the language.
There you are. And then we'll strike condition nine, we'll strike condition 13, and modify number eight so that the trailer's located on the north end of the parcel.
Nine is the sidewalk, 13 is the payment toward a gate, and what was the other number you're modifying?
Eight. Eight, as simply recognizing option B.
Option B. Or a mutually agreed, I don't.
Option B.
Yeah, because if there aren't three containers, then I think we can, I would recommend, if the council's okay, that it be left to staff's approval to modify option B.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
If there's only one or two containers, that might change the dynamic there. So if everybody understands that, is there a motion to be had?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 3146-13, approving design review and temporary structure permit to allow Maison Re to locate three storage containers in one office trailer, and to permit parking for employees, guests, and special events on the adjacent parcel located at 6725 Washington Street, APN 036-032-028, for a period of 12 months with the following changes, that conditions nine and 10, nine and 13 be removed, eight stipulate south, a preference for south location or staff agreement.
North. North location, actually.
North location.
For the trailer?
Yes, north location or staff agreement with the applicant. And modify number six so that we allow the office space use to continue if construction does begin before March 20th, 2015, but in the temporary storage container use at that time.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, if I should have a question?
So just one clarifying question. We, this number six, if construction has commenced, do we have a definition of that? Is that a building permit has been issued? What does that mean?
Condition number.
Six.
Condition number four helps define that, that.
Attendants have been secured, and a building permit has been submitted.
And I think the question is whether or not they, if they put one shovel in the ground, does that mean construction has commenced?
What does construction commence mean?
Right. They have an approved building permit, and they've mobilized on the site.
Okay, so a building permit has been submitted. So what does that mean?
I would say a building permit has been issued in order for construction to have.
Right. Let's strike submitted in number four and change to issued.
I'll stipulate that in my resolution.
So in the.
Second.
Second, are you okay with that?
I'm okay to second, and additional stipulation.
Just to kind of piggyback on that question, is the anticipation of the town council that one shovel in the ground is going to mean construction has commenced, or are you looking for some form of substantial construction commencing, or?
I don't know that we've ever required a clock on that, once the building permit is issued, other than some level of, you know, there needs to be, it can't be inactive, right? Is there a two-year limit on the inactivity of a building permit?
It goes in six-month cycles after it's issued, but typically, a level of construction that requires a permit. So the short answer is, a shovel full of dirt will not trigger a permit. Completion of a foundation would require a foundation inspection. So there would be, I think, that would be how we would look at it, as whether work has actually commenced.
I think it's easy to assume, also, kind of common sense, that the property owner would not be ready with a building permit and then not do something.
Well, we've gone through that on this particular parcel, so we hope that that will not be the case by any stretch of the imagination.
Not again. Lightning on the same site. Anyway, there is a motion in the second. Any further question or discussion by the council? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. So thank you very much for coming forward, and look forward to seeing how this all plays out. Thanks very much. Next up, we have item 9B, Municipal Code Amendment Sewer Lateral Ordinance. What is before us is an introduction and first reading. I believe the town manager has a statement.
Yes, Mayor and council, we have received a number of correspondence from the local real estate community, and have been in conversations with Daniel Sanchez and representatives of Norbar. And what we would like to do, staff would like to recommend, that we defer action on this proposed ordinance for a period of time to allow staff to meet with representatives of Norbar and see if we can have a better understanding. We've had some conversations, and I think additional conversations may help to clarify. I think there's been some misunderstanding on some of the terms by representatives, and when we clarify, and we think if we sit down, there may be an opportunity to craft something that both sides are in supportive, or if not, we can bring it back at that point. But at least we want to give that opportunity. And there has been a request and an acknowledgement on the part of Norbar that they would appreciate that opportunity. So that is what staff would respectfully recommend that we do at this time with this item.
And that is the North Bay Association of Realtors, for those that aren't in the industry.
That is correct.
Yes, I was just going to make one other comment, that we have received about two dozen emails from various Realtors from, throughout the area, and some of them did respond to issues that are not part of the proposed ordinance. So some do have concerns about some of the language that's in the ordinance. So that also was one of the reasons that staff was going to recommend that we put this off to a further date. Councilmember Muller?
Yeah, I would just like to recommend that staff is going to be discussing this with our real estate agents, who are also interested, that they perhaps also look into some other options, when, if this comes back in a different form to us. And a couple of things I'd like to suggest, I don't really have all the numbers, and it certainly isn't a flushed-out plan, but I guess my overall concept is that sometimes, you know, this can be onerous and difficult to follow, who's got the inspection done every 10 months? And if you're selling your house, well, how's everything done? And do I really have tree roots in my sewer and all that? All that needs to be done. I totally agree with that. But is there something that we could put in place, such as a sewer lateral inspection fee that we, I know it would have to be noticed by Prop 218, that we put on all the parcels, that, you know, we collect the money to take care of that for everybody, although they're paying for it, just like they would on their own? And perhaps something like a sewer lateral insurance program? So they pay an additional fee, they pay into an insurance pool, so that their inspection comes back positive, they can draw from that, the town can then draw from that pool that we all pay as residents to have our lateral fixed. Or some form of that, just something to consider.
I'm just going to kind of interrupt now, because if it's the council's prerogative to put this off, I don't want to get us all into the dialogue of what staff or the council may want to make as recommendations. If it is the interest of the council to postpone this, I think we would all have the opportunity to share those thoughts that you just shared here, as well as any representatives from the Realty Association that wants to participate. But Vice Mayor, you had a question?
Well, I think a little on that question, and we're talking about continuing this item, is, and maybe the town attorney can comment on this, to what degree can we at least have some level of presentation of staff on the need for this, what it exactly means? I mean, I did see the, you know, forget about all the emails we received, the ordinance requires property owners to clean and/or test private sewer laterals every 10 years. I can tell you, I haven't really thought about having my sewer lateral cleaned or tested. I don't know what that means, I don't know what the cost is, I don't know if we're putting in a regime that says you have to certify, I mean, what I don't want to do is go away and then come back and ask a whole bunch of questions that we might already be thinking. That was the one, maybe it makes more sense to delay it, and I can send you my list, and that's better, I don't know.
My hesitation is that we have a partial conversation now, without having it be a public hearing. I want to avoid that. Either the council can say, yes, we want to hear this item tonight and go through the whole public hearing, or take staff's recommendation that we continue this to a future date.
And what I would also encourage, certainly as part of that, staff will reach out and have some dialogue with the council and make sure everybody understands. Because I do think it is an important thing to realize, we are talking about the private property laterals, which are the maintenance responsibility of the private parties and not the town, because there were some emails that said, well, isn't that what our rate, you know, that's what our taxes go for? No, it's not, because the private property laterals are all of our own personal responsibility. So we will do a little better job of trying to explain the intent and purpose. I will point out, though, that this is one of seven triggering mechanisms, not, it is not focused on the real estate industry. It included other triggers, such as pulling building permits at a certain value, plumbing renovations. So the intent is to put together, the program costs, and we can certainly do a better job in the staff report of identifying, but you're looking at something in the magnitude of $300 plus or minus for the inspection. Where it gets to be a little more situational would be, what is the cost of, once the property owner understands that there's a problem, and the sewer line is not working? Those vary, and that depends a lot on the specific property. So I think there's some education that we can certainly do on our part to improve the staff report, work with them. But I do want everybody to realize, there were seven triggering mechanisms, including things like known problems that the property owners experienced. So it's not a singular, with the goal being that over time, these triggering, and most of these activities are elective. In other words, somebody, the homeowner is electing to renovate their house, they're electing to expand their plumbing system, they're electing to sell the house, so it's a trigger mechanism. Many agencies throughout the state have a program, and it does not need to be cumbersome, and we can work, and we try to, well, in this dialogue, we'd like to better understand from the Realtors what their concerns are, and maybe we can craft language that ultimately achieves a shared interest.
Yeah, Town Attorney, were you going to make a comment?
Just to follow up on that, the only concern I would have is if there's a dialogue that has commenced this evening, and through the conversations between staff and the real estate industry, that if it comes back to you in a completely different format, or there are other changes, then we're still back at square one, but with a different styled or different formatted ordinance.
Okay.
So, but I think what Steve has suggested is, you know, staff would be very happy to reach out to each council member and get your individual feedback as to what should be included as part of this discussion, or even try to address the comprehensive policy decision.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
On that note, as a property owner in the town of Yountville, I would really appreciate being educated on this subject. And so in that being, I make a motion that we, let's.
Continue.
Continue this item to a future town council meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we need a date certain?
Well, if you have.
It's on an application.
I would suggest that we don't, because this way, we can just renotice it and bring it back.
Okay.
That will give adequate time for that conversation to take place.
All right.
Any other questions? If not, there's a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Could you clarify the second list for me?
The second was from the Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. See you soon.
So we know you were all, almost all of you were here for this, but.
We'll see you again.
Those red alerts really work.
I was going to send an email to all of you again, but.
No, oh, it is? Okay.
Thank you for your interest. So we're going to move on now to our next item.
Red alerts?
I've lost nine C. Next public hearing is Municipal Code Amendment, Local Authority Red Zone, Introduction and First Reading.
Okay.
So now that we've sufficiently cleared the room.
Right.
Mr. Wadsworth, you may begin your staff report.
This is one that's much less controversial.
Let's just, let's.
Wait, wait. Or at least we think not. People are coming here. Oh, I'm sure.
They're finding legal parking.
So we are talking about parking. As you know, there was a study back in 2005, a look at parking and traffic and circulation and everything. So the town has been looking for more parking along, especially Washington Street, where we've had lots of businesses. And so we've, one of the things we looked at was in front of fire hydrants, the California code says that you should have 30 feet unless there's an ordinance passed by the municipality, town council, to reduce that to less than the 30 feet, which could be 10 feet on each side, or even less. And so it would leave it up to the situation at each fire hydrant. There's 65 fire hydrants in town, a lot of those are in Old Town, where there are no curbs to paint red. But the area we're focusing on is mostly Washington Street and the commercial areas. So essentially, what we're asking to do is to adopt a change to the ordinance that allows for the reduction of the, what we call the red curb or the red zone, from 30 feet down to roughly 10 feet. If there is a situation, for example, on Washington Street, where there's no reasonable detour to get around the area, that we could look at just keeping it at 30 feet. The fire marshal was saying that, you know, the code was written, so the fire truck could parallel park next to the fire hydrant, which I've never seen a fire truck parked parallel next to a fire hydrant. They usually park in the street, and everybody has to get around them. But we could leave that open to a 30-foot area for a situation where it would be hard to either go out to the highway, or go, there's no way to go around through the neighborhoods. As you know, we don't have some streets that don't go through, such as Heritage and Heather and stuff. So we could look at that section of Washington Street and keep those at 30. So this just gives us more flexibility, create more parking. When we did the Slurry Seal project, we looked at the striping for the parking spaces, and tried to keep room at the crosswalks, keep room at driveways, per the mandatory uniform traffic control devices. But this would give us situations like at the post office and the sheriff's office, where we can reduce it down to 20 feet, where it's reasonable to fit, you know, one more parking space in there. So that's the gist in a nutshell of what the ordinance is. It's a fairly small change, and I'd ask the town attorney if he has anything else to add on this.
No, that summarizes the staff report.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Dornbecker?
I do have one question, which is based on the ordinance number. And under Section 3, under severability, I don't understand that first paragraph, and I'm going to ask our town council to please.
Be happy to. This is, Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, this is a provision that's found in many ordinances. What it means is that the ordinance would be examined on a paragraph-by-paragraph provision, or sentence-by-sentence provision, so that if any portion of the ordinance or its application is determined to be invalid, it doesn't toss out the baby with the bathwater, the rest of the ordinance stays in place.
I see. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hall?
Hi, Graham. So, not a significant change, I recognize that. How many spaces are we going to gain, approximately?
When we looked at the Slurry Seal work on Washington Street, this last go-around with our project, we thought we could probably add about three on Washington Street, but if that's in front of your business, then it's a pretty popular thing to do.
Three total?
Right.
Okay. I want to ask my next question, which is how much incremental cost, since this isn't technically budgeted?
Well, we're, essentially, what we do is, when we do a Slurry Seal project, or there's development or something, we would change the striping at that time.
At that time, so it wouldn't be really any incremental cost to the town.
Let's save a little red paint.
Well, you've got to get out there and measure and the other stuff, thank you.
What we could do is that, you know, instead of repainting the 30 feet, we could just repaint 20 feet if it's appropriate.
I see, I get it.
If there's a place that doesn't have parking tees and stuff.
But you're talking about three spaces net?
Roughly, yeah. On Washington Street, there may be other situations that we did this as well. Mulberry, Fennel.
Is that north or south? I mean, where on Washington Street, you're talking about today?
I don't remember exactly, but I think there was some, on the west side of Washington, near Mulberry, down near Ranch Market.
And also like French Laundry, there's a lot of red in the fire hydrant across the central.
Parking across the French Laundry is another spot, we could reduce it. And that doesn't have the parking tees, so people sort of make their way in there, as best they can.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So to follow up on Councilmember Hall, we're not talking about going out and So, to follow up on Councilmember Hall, we're not talking about going out and re-striping all of Washington Street and doing the curbs and changing all the parking tees. This is on a, as an opportunity presents itself basis?
Correct.
Okay. The only other thing that I found not present in the report was what Cal Fire thinks of this.
Is there any issue? I know, I agree with you that I think it's an archaic belief that they're going to
take the town to parallel park into a, it's like you don't do that with a bus either, so.
Well, the buses do a better job, but the, the firefighters are usually, like when the Bouchon had the fire, they essentially just blocked Washington Street.
I think it's really understood by the public that they're not going to be required to pull up to the edge of the curb.
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't think the sheriff will write them a ticket.
But, does Cal Fire have a position on this?
I did email with Pete Manoa, the fire marshal, and he said, he was the one who said that this code was written so that the fire trucks could park next to the curb with there's 30 feet of distance there. He didn't see any, he didn't have any other concerns or, you know, he said he's supportive of this and that he doesn't see a safety issue with the change in the ordinance.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions?
In that vein, this really is an effort to protect our parking because if we apply or are forced to apply the strict standards from the state, as the Public Works Director was, I think, trying to state, we actually would lose parking. And that's not a positive thing in the commercial and transitional neighborhoods.
I think we got it. I think I'll open the public hearing to the public that's here and invite any comment. Seeing none coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and invite council to either discuss or act on this item.
Well, I was going to say that I, my only question that wasn't answered was whether you had talked to Pete and cleared that, so that's good. And if we've made a huge error, they can come back to us and tell us and we'll
Is that the beginning of a motion from the Vice Mayor?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number, first reading of ordinance number 423-14. An ordinance of the town council, the town of Yountville amending section 10.28.100, chapter 10.28 of title 10 of the Yountville Municipal Code, to reduce the distance of the parking prohibition adjacent to the fire hydrants along the streets of the town pursuant to California Vehicle Code, section 22514, with a waiving of the first reading.
Second.
Just for clarification, this is to introduce.
Yes, he did say introduce, yeah. And waive the reading, so.
And I'll second that.
There has been a second. Councilmember Hall, any further discussion? Seeing none, action, all approve?
Approve.
Approve.
Aye. Aye.
There we go.
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
No opposition, that's the key. We introduce and waive that item. So, we're going to move forward to our first administrative regular item, voluntary water shortage emergency regulations.
Okay, we have a presentation for you tonight. If you haven't been listening to the radio or watching the news, the governor declared a drought emergency. So, we would like to talk to you about the town's regulations, so, and our water use efficiency plan. So, let me get the Okay, so, like to give you a little bit of background on the droughts. There's some information on history of droughts in California in your council packet. Phase one water emergency regulations is one of four phases in the town's emergency regu, water shortage regulations. The water use efficiency plan, I'd like to talk about that, which includes rebate programs and then ask you for recommendations. Droughts occur about every 10 to 20 years in California. There were major droughts in 1928 to '35, 1976, '77, and then late 80s, early 90s. The droughts during the, what they called the Dust Bowl, was what led to many of the reservoirs that have been constructed in California. There was a building boom, you might say, of dams. And those dams, because of the lack of rainfall in 2013, are very low, some down to 20%, like at Folsom. So, the governor is concerned. The State Department of Water Resources have actually talked about having no allocations of water from the state water project to farmers. So, farmers are turning around and not growing certain crops this year. It's difficult with orchards, so that's going to be an interesting area where they're buying water at a higher price. Also, it creates demand on groundwater, river water, and the state is also talking about not allowing people to exercise their water rights, which could affect some of the vineyards in the Napa Valley if that does go through. As I mentioned, the governor did declare a declaration of a drought emergency. He's asked for all citizens of California to reduce our water uses by 20%. He even had some interesting recommendations on how to do that. Councilmember Muller talked about one last meeting was about putting the bucket in your shower and when the water's warming up?
How was this one?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dornbecker, to use that water for then irrigating your yard and there are other, other methods and uses.
I've implemented that in my own home.
That's good, we appreciate that.
As stated on Facebook.
I put it up on Facebook.
Oh, good. Well, we're, we're part of, this will be education. You heard from the administrator, the California Department of Veterans Affairs at our last council meeting. In 2004, the town and the California Department of Veterans Affairs entered an agreement to sell water from Rector Reservoir to the town. And that was the end of a moratorium that the council had on new water connections. And so, the town had implemented the water shortage emergency for that in 1998, and that essentially has put all stops to new construction of hotels, restaurants, tasting rooms, and homes. When that was lifted, then we had a building boom, you might say, in Yountville. The phase one regulations call for the voluntary reduction by all citizens of 10%. The installation of water-saving devices is encouraged. I'll talk about that a little bit more with the rebate program. Washing cars with buckets instead of running hoses and essentially having a nozzle, if you do have hoses for irrigating your yard or for hand watering, is preferred with buckets. And then, also it asks for the town staff to notify people when they are wasting water. This isn't anything where we would be saying it's a misdemeanor or writing tickets or anything like that, but just to say when we see people over-irrigating or things like that, to talk with them and try to encourage them to reduce their usage, adjust their timers on their irrigation. One of the things that's going to be, I want to talk about, and the town manager may want to jump in here as well, is about conversion to monthly utility billing. At this point, we bill for water and sewer on a bimonthly basis, so our crews will go out and they'll read all the water meters in town and put together the bills with the finance department for every other month. The, the reason for this is to have monthly billing. You can see what your usage is more frequently and you can make adjustments, see how well you're doing in terms of your conservation. With our current situation and staffing in the finance department, we're really not set up to do monthly billing. There is a, a burden with that to do additional mailings, respond to people who aren't paying their water bills to go do shut offs and notices and stuff like that. So, we are asking for some more time to implement this measure. I don't know if the town manager would like to expand on that.
Well, actually, what we will be doing is, I'll be moving forward with hiring a part-time accounting assistant so we can make the transition because if we, we also have to anticipate that this will be protracted, which means if we really want people to understand what they're using, we have to give them timely, accurate information. I also know that the transition has been a desire of the council, so this will be a good triggering mechanism, since that's my word for the day, triggering mechanism. So, we will be putting that forward and I think we can accomplish that within the current, you know, I may use a little bit of the money in the town manager's contingency reserve, but it's something we need to do. We're going to need to augment that, our, our current staffing situation, because there will be some increased cost because going from a six-month-a-year situation to a 12-month, obviously does have a little bit more, but that, we believe, is appropriate and we're beginning already discussing those steps, as well as internal discussions on, on how to take the lead on public education, increase public education and, and a lot of things will be, a lot of our focus. So, staff will, at all levels, are, will be involved in working on that and how to formulate. And more importantly, the town will need to set the example in terms of water conservation.
So, with the monthly billing, there'll be notifications telling people that if you're using too much water, which would be, affect them during phase two, then we would let them know that, you know, you would need to reduce your usage more. Again, which is more notification than, than what we do now. And then informing people when they're applying for building permits, that if phase two or three or four goes into place, what effect that is. You know, will they not be able to do irrigation of new landscaping? Will they not even be able to get a water meter to connect if it gets to be a phase four? So, there will be a lot of public education outreach, the newsletter, e-notifications, you know, there's information, we're working with the city of Napa, we have a contract for water conservation. You may have seen them in Yountville days. We would increase that for posting things on our webpage, distributing information, mailers, things like that. And we'll get to that in a bit. So, a couple of years ago, I worked with a, an agency called, it's the Rural Communities Assistance Corporation, and they're funded by the State Water Resources Control Board to, to help small agencies, rural agencies, Indian reservations, these small agencies that don't have a lot of resources that the big agencies, like East Bay Municipal Utilities District, have to do water efficiency or rebate programs and stuff like that. So, they helped us to put together a water use efficiency plan. This is similar to what the governor mentioned about urban water management plan, which is required for agencies which have more than 3,000 customers because we're less, we're not mandated to do that, but we did feel it was a good, to put this together. There's some good information in there about our service area, the regulations the town council's adopted for water storage emergencies, water conservation. Also talks about our supply support, support, source capacity at Rector Reservoir, our well, and also we have an agreement with the city of Napa to purchase water in an emergency or drought. Talked about a recycle water program. For the town, mostly the recycle water program is for irrigation of the golf course and the vineyards. You're familiar with the Recycle Water Project, which is out to bid right now. More agencies will look at industrial reuse, commercial reuse, using in parks and stuff like that. And we've gone through that and talked about that in the, in the plan. Water production versus consumption. There's some charts in there, some graphs that show the usage of water by the town and also broken down by different uses, like residential, commercial. You could see that the recession in 2009, the water uses went down. Now, with recession ending, more people in hotels and restaurants, the usage is going up. So, you can see how that has, has changed. We are using, well, last, last year we used 581 acre feet of water. Our agreement with the veterans home is 500 acre feet, so we're 81 acre feet over our allocation. We're making efforts to reduce leakage, over-usage, doing more conservation, but a lot of the demand, 40%, is based on hotels and restaurants. So, unless they can reduce their demand and a resident's can reduce demand, which is the other 50 or so, 60%, it's going to be difficult to get below that 500 acre feet. If there's, we get into more of a drought emergency in April, when we hear from the California Department of Veterans Affairs about what allocation we can expect for the year, we may need to look at using the well. So, what would that take to turn on the well, to operate the well, to sample the water per the California Department of Health Regulations? In the water use efficiency plan, also talks about the plumbing code, some of the requirements that are in there when people get building permits, and then the conservation measures, which I'll touch on next. So, the town has had a water conservation program since the 1998 moratorium. We have a clothes washer program where we work with specific gas and electric, so when people go to the store to buy a new washer, they can get a rebate of $50. It's just cost share between P G and E and the town. If people purchase a high-efficiency toilet, then they can go to the corporation yard, dispose of it there, we fill out, we sign their form, and then they get a rebate on their water bill. The Cash for Grass program, which we chuckled about last meeting, is a program the city of Napa has implemented and they have agreed as part of our conservation agreement to do the pre-inspection and post-inspections with us. So, we'll be getting some information out to the public about that, where if you take out your lawn and you put in drought tolerant and it meets the requirements, then you can get so many dollars per square feet of lawn. Smart Irrigation Controllers is coming a little bit. This is essentially a controller that you put in the ground. It monitors the, the moisture of the ground. If it's raining, then it keeps your irrigation controller from turning on. So, that is a requirement in the East Bay Municipal Utility District. Any people who get a new irrigation connection or new meter have to have this type of controller, so this would be a program to help people to purchase those. Save Our Water is a state webpage that the governor has promoted in his declaration, has good water-saving tips that people can find on the
It's actually Save RH2O.
Oh, okay. I guess we, we need to update our information. And then Sprinkler Times is another webpage that helps people in terms of setting their controllers of, you know, you don't just water for half an hour, you try to break it up, space it out an hour and things like that. So, there are things that people can do to not just reduce the amount of water, but also save money on their water bill. So, our recommendations tonight are to implement a phase one regulations and to approve the water use efficiency plan. So, with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor?
You answered one of my questions, which was commercial versus residential, so 40/60 on that, which is substantial. I, I guess the, the thing that I, you know, we're in a, this is a voluntary situation. I'm not quite sure how you enforce, maybe fine people if it's not voluntary, but hopefully we never get to that, so you don't have to answer the question right now. What tangibly, in terms of our residents and, you know, when this gets in, you know, the Yountville sun, I think the, it's the education piece, do we have like the top five things? I mean, I don't know if using a clothes washer or, you know, a nice long shower or irrigation, what are the two or three things that, I'm sure there's like two or three things that just chew up water in a house? What are they?
The biggest one is irrigation. If people look at their water bills in January, February versus August, September, it's going to be a lot more during the summer. So, if people can reduce the amount of water, water more frequently, but space it out over a couple, so, a couple days. So, if you irrigate for five minutes, an hour later, five minutes, and then an hour later, five minutes, then skip two days and then go on. So, setting the controllers is a great way to reduce the amount of water. And to look at your lawn and how long does it, you know, when does it start turning brown, when it start, you know, when it stop popping back up. So, there's ways that you can set, minimize the amount of water that you use outside, and that's, that's the biggest one. In terms of, you know, people could, you know, look at water-efficient toilets and washers and things like that, those are all pretty small incremental changes. It works statewide if everybody goes and does it. And also, you know, there's other benefits of reducing greenhouse gases and electricity uses and stuff like that. So, it's, it's, it gets, you know, really very small incremental changes that add up. And so, there's not, other than irrigation, there's not really a big one thing that people can do. It's a lot of little things.
And I do think, Vice Mayor, that that's a, a good conversation point, and that's why I say, staff's going to be working on collecting a lot of relevant tips and information. The good news is a lot of it's out there, so we're going to collect it, put it into a format to help. But, it is one of those, it's a cliche, but every little bit helps in this case. And I think we need to look at it because we have immediate adjacent jurisdictions that are going to a stage two, which begins mandatory rationing, fines and penalties. And you're correct, our current effort is voluntary and it's educational. Our hope is that will help. I do want to point out, we have one unique situation in our system and we will be spending a little more time chatting with our unincorporated county residents that we provide water to because those folks use, as we may remember from our rate study, on average, four to 10 times more than the average single-family home inside the incorporated limits. So, there's a couple that, when we add to that, but the effort would be, if we can all do something now, it will forestall mandatory rationing. And it's, I mean, it's simple as Councilmember Dornbecker's idea of the, the bucket. People, you'd be surprised how much water is wasted in a family of four if the sink is running while you're brushing your teeth as opposed to just getting the toothbrush wet, turning it off. And that, I'm seeing, all of those are the types of things we're going to illustrate, but I do need to echo, landscape irrigation is the number one.
Well, that's why I asked that question because, no offense, as my 10-year-old says when they say that, they mean offense, but every little bit helps, except for the fact that you feel like you're doing something, but you're actually not really doing anything, right? I mean, if there's a couple of things that you do because you, you want to help, but it saves 1% or you take your irrigation, instead of doing it every two days, you do every four, and that just blows away every other thing we can possibly do.
That's the focus.
I think that's what people need to know, what really has an impact. Because going out and buying a new clothes washer, I don't actually know how much that, that saves, but probably skipping a wash, that saves a lot more. So, I think that relative basis is what, I mean, I admit, I don't, I don't know the best. I know irrigation's a big deal.
Well, that's why, the, the website that you mentioned, and that's the one that the, the state is promoting, I would suggest that we put that on our webpage. It's, you have it in here, it's saveth2o.org. And in that, they have a calculator. So, you know, if you want to say, if I, you know, collect my shower water versus I buy a new washing machine, you know, what are the numbers? There is a sprinkler 101 tutorial that tells you, it's not only the timing, but the time of day that you turn your sprinklers on tells you, you know, what to do in the home and outdoor. So, it's a great website. It's very simple to use.
We're aware, and what I want to let you know is staff upon your work. What I do want you to know is that our public work staff, not, not just Graham and Kevin, but we're going to be trying not, not just Graham and Kevin, but we're going to be trying to make sure we have handouts and information, and our overhaul of the website, our next newsletters. We will be spending some serious staff time trying to get all of these things in a format. So I just want you to know, this will be a fairly intense project for us to get the information ready to send out. But we're prepared, we're going to be having some roundtable discussions amongst all of us to, to help do that, because that is where we make the biggest impact.
I want to get back on, on point, if we can, about what the action is that you're being, that we're being asked tonight.
Before, I do want to mention that Kevin Scotters, a managing analyst, has been doing a lot of work with the water use efficiency plan, getting that updated, and he'll, he can help us with education and all. Kevin Gaither, Nick Hickman, Jake King have been out working with a lot of property owners who we found high usage. And they have a register that you can put onto the meter that will track it every hour. You may remember what happened with Hotel Yountville. They had a major leak, and we did a leak adjustment and all. So we're trying to find those big users that are having leaks that would be a big fix to, you know, if your water's running all day, all night, 24 hours a day, then that's a big saving. So people should look at their water bill and see if it's, seems higher than normal. We have three or so years of record, so we can start to look at more detail about outside water customers, you know, are they using excessive of what people in town use? So, they are available as a resource if people want to help, have help with irrigation, or they think they have a leak and things like that. So that's, again, another resource the town has available.
Is there more discussion about this?
Well, I just wanted to add that, despite the fact that having a bucket in your shower and using that to water your household plants, and also rinsing off the dishes before you put them in the dishwasher with that water, by the way. But that's, you know, those are the kinds of things that, they may not, you know, on an individual basis mean anything, but I think that the more people we can engage and enlist in thinking about the water that they're using, the better it is, because water is going to be an issue for years and years and years and years to come. So, I, you know, I, I totally agree about the, you know, the outdoor uses being paramount. But as many people as we can get to, and I, I applaud, and I'm ready to make a motion to pass this resolution.
Councilmember Hall has a question or statement.
So what are, if we fast forward, what are Phase Two usage limits that we could expect?
Phase Two would be 20%, I'm sorry, 15%.
Yeah, it's in the staff report. It's 15 for.
It was 15?
For private residents and business.
So it's not based on like gallons per individual? Like, okay, thank you. And do we know the timing of when we anticipate monthly water billings?
It says it'll be several months, according to the.
But there's nothing specific.
The short answer is, as you know, I, no. I'm, but it's a high priority, and I anticipate within three to four months, we will be implementing. It, it will be before the July summer season.
Okay.
The other part of Phase Two would be that water irrigation of lawns landscaping would be prohibited between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m.
Okay. But there's no teeth to say, we're going to fine you, or if you use too much water. So, the point is, let's not get to there, and I'm, I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
If we get into three and four, then it becomes a misdemeanor and a nuisance and.
Okay. Thank you.
I heard Councilmember Dornbecker offered to make a motion on this item.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 3151-14, implementing Phase One of Water Emergency Regulations and Approve Water Use Efficiency Plan.
Second.
Councilmember Hall, second. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just a, a point I'll make on behalf of the entire council, I think it's critical that the town be the lead on this, especially because we have so many parks, so much irrigation, that if anybody sees a broken sprinkler or a water condition that, you know, it's flooding in, in one of our parks, please call, call the town, let us know. I know our team is out there all the time monitoring, but the more eyes, the better. So, this is certainly not just on the residents and businesses, but it's on the town to monitor as well. So thank you very much for that. Moving on to 10B, potential changes to the town standard for street name signs.
Okay.
Really working hard tonight, Graham.
Yeah, but sometimes, you know, Public Works is busy on, sometimes you don't hear anything from me. So, street name signs, this is another one of those federal regulations that we're implementing. I do want to thank John Draper. He did a lot of research on this. He talked to Caltrans. So we're trying to understand what can we do, what should we do, things like that. Also, Kevin Gaither is here tonight, and he has purchased some signs and formed those up, so we can show those to you tonight as, as a demonstration. So, I want to thank him for being here. The Federal High Administration, through the Federal Register, had implemented requirements for what's called retroreflectivity. So when you're driving down the street at night, and your headlights are shining on a stop sign or a speed limit sign, it should sort of look like it's lit up, and so it's the headlights reflecting back on those signs. And there's different types, and you have a reflectometer, and it shows you how good it is and how much it reflects. And at some point, it degrades from the sun and the weather to the point where it's not very reflective anymore. Oftentimes, signs are in paint, and then that fades more quickly than if it's a plastic reflective material. So what the Federal High Administration has found is that by having those retroreflective signs at night, it's reduced traffic fatalities and accidents, and obviously the costs that go with that. So, they went through the Federal Register and said, all regulatory signs, stop signs, speed limit signs, shall be retroreflective by a certain date. And then they went and said, while we're doing that, let's also do guide signs, which are like street name signs, or how to get to a park sign. And then they backed off a little bit and took out the deadline. So what they said is that the town shall have a program to look at our signs, reflectivity, and replace them on a schedule. That could be as simple as, you know, going out and checking them all, or putting four signs in the corporation yard pointed in each direction, and when the one that's facing south fades out, you replace all the south-facing signs. So, it's somewhat flexible, you might say. So we have endeavored on starting to replace stop signs and, and other signs in town. I don't know if you've, you've noticed, but it, it is an effort that we're going through to bring those signs up to speed, or up to the current regulations. One of those areas is street name signs, and in the 1970s, Mr. Halperin had recommended that the town frame out stop signs and regulatory signs, and so we have a wood post, we have a wood sign, or the sign mounted with a wood frame around it. It's very unique for Yountville, and it's been one of those unique, interesting things that people like about Yountville. The other part was the street name signs. So our town standard has a wood sign post, and it engraved, you know, carved-out letters, and those are painted white. The difficulty is that it's hard to see those at night. Our concern is that if there's an emergency, and you have somebody drive an ambulance, or a sheriff from outside the area, or, you know, in a major incident, if there's a major fire, earthquake, we'd have people coming from other agencies outside the area. They're not familiar with Yountville. To get to a incident, they would be looking for street name signs. In most cities around the country, they're on a metal post, seven feet up in the air with, you know, the, the plates horizontal with the street name signs. So our concern is that there is some legitimacy to the Federal High Administration to make it safer for public safety to get to these incidents. So what we've brought to you tonight is four options for looking at the signs. The Sign Management Program is what we're calling, you know, to, to look at the retroreflectivity and replace signs as, as necessary. And now we want to talk about the street name signs in, in particular. So, the options are, do you want a metal post or a wood post? Do you want signs at the top of the, of the wood post, or do you want them on the side of a post? And then, do we want to just say no change, we want to stick with the existing town standard? Had some pictures. This is as you're driving into town on California and Washington. If you look to the left, there's a street name sign there. It's kind of hard to see. It kind of blends in with the stop sign. And it's, if you're driving into town, you may not be looking left. You may be looking, you know, for a street name sign. This is a sign, if you're going southbound on Washington at Yount, this is one of the newer signs, so it's on the right side. So it's, it's good if you're driving south and you see that you're at Yount Street, but if you're driving north, it's kind of hard to see on the other side of the street. So one of the things we looked at was having, one of the recommendations from the Federal High Administration was to have signs on two corners instead of just one corner on commercial corridors. That, whoops, too fast. This is a new sign up at Madison at Washington. So you're driving into town going east. You get to Washington, and this is next to the stop sign, and it's fairly prominent here. Again, if you're driving from Madison going west towards the highway, it might be kind of hard to see. Also, some of these signs, when they get old, they get brown, and you get irrigation on it, and you get some of the, the white calcification from the water, or the bleaching from the chlorine. So oftentimes, like this is at Forester and Foxglove, they're in the neighborhood, so we'll find a place, you know, where it's near the property line. This one wasn't near the, you know, we try to put them at the corners, but if you have a T-intersection, it's not always possible. So, we put them in as best we can, or work with the developers when they build the subdivisions. And when they deteriorate and rot out, oftentimes people will use the weed whacker and whack around the, the bottom of the post, and then they'll just deteriorate and rot, and we'll have to replace them. Some examples from other communities. Carmel, California, they have street name signs on the stop sign. You can see the metal post. And then they strap the sign, this has vertical lettering, so it's reading from top to bottom. And then this one is in Truckee, California, and it's on a wood post, but the reading is from left to right, going from the bottom to the top. So just wanted to throw out some different options for, you know, what the, what are possibilities. So, this is one option. Kevin, if you could bring out, or I guess we have it here. The mock-up of a wood post, a little shorter than what it would be in the ground. It's next, this is in front of Town Hall. So this was what it would look like out in front. We could also make the post a little bit bigger. Some, some of the older posts were eight by eight or six by six. And then this would be the black lettering on white. You can also do a black border around these. So this would be a retroreflective sign, which you'd be able to see at night and on a wood post. The other one.
Let's have, can you bring that maybe right up in front of the podium, so the council can all see, and we might have a chance for the folks at home to see as well on camera? So you're saying that the current height is a foot taller than that?
It'll be about, about five feet tall. So if we go back and look at the Fennel sign, it'd probably be about that, that tall. So this was a little bit shorter, just for demonstration.
You're saying the, in that, in that slide, the Fennel height is the accurate height?
Correct.
The, the sample is actually a foot lower than it would be?
Correct.
So it'd be an.
As you mentioned, one of the issues is if you were an ambulance, or a police car, or just a frantic citizen.
We need to, sorry, we need to get you on mic. So maybe you just bring that all forward to the podium and then share, because we want everybody to hear.
When I had to bring that up front, it's because you couldn't see it. So, our existing signs, what happens to them is, one pickup truck, one van parked in the way, the sign's invisible, it's too short. So the, the real issue with our existing stuff beyond the reflectivity is it's too short. It can be screened very easily by a vehicle.
And these other two signs would be seven feet tall, so they're just on short posts.
The minimum on these, I, I think is eight now.
Okay.
So, regardless of what material you used, you would have that visibility over the top of a van, or a truck, or a tree, or a bush. This just happens to be the metal hardware. Obviously not as attractive, but it's not as subject to the sprinklers and the damage and the weed whacking, so there's some strength and longevity to this application over these, which are replaced on a pretty regular basis. Both regulatory signs, the posts are starting to become very, very expensive for the town, the big, thick ones there. These are a little more cheaper, and of course, the signs are part of the cost, too.
So, a, as you're showing us right now, is your, one of the options, the thinner post with reflective lettering? Or would you require the thick post if we were to discuss the reflective lettering along the side?
Right. The, because of the lettering size, there's two options. I have, you know, these six points here. So there's a type of the sign, which is metal or wood. The sign color, green or white, is what we recommend. You could go with brown or blue. The sign, do you want a border or no border? Kevin's holding the signs that do have a border. The one here does not. Lettering size, and this is the issue, Federal High Administration recommends six inches for the first letter, and four and a half for the second letters, or letters after that. Because we have low-speed streets, 25, 35 is the fastest, we could go down to a three-inch, I'm sorry, four-inch for the first letter, and three inches for the second letters. And in orientation, do you want to read up and down, or sideways? And then, number of signs per the intersection, we're recommending that, you know, at major intersections like Washington-Yount, you'd have two signs. Maybe residential streets, you'd just have one. So we don't want to have sign pollution, but we want to have enough signs so people can find their way around. So we wanted to bring these to you tonight, just as some samples, examples. We can do different colors. We can get, you know, bigger posts. We can also inset the reflective sign panel into the post, where we route out the wood and then inset the, the sign into, into the post. So that's, or there's, you know, no change. So one of the recommendations that town manager brought up was to do a demonstration out in the field, to put up some samples that people could look at and give us their comments.
So, these are non-compliant by state regulation, but we're not required to change them?
We're required to have a sign management program, that if we have signs, we need to replace them with retroreflective signs, so.
So we are required to change them?
We are required to have retroreflective signs. So what the state is saying is, if you have no street name signs, you don't have to do anything. But if you have street name signs, they need to be retroreflective.
Well, we have them. So, okay. So, were there any other questions about the report? If not.
All right. Steve, did you want to expand on the demonstration?
Thank you, Graham. What we would like to do is, we realize this is a significant change, and we also realize, as Public Works Director referenced, we have a historical general plan that does have some unique elements dating back to Lawrence Halperin. I think what would be most effective with your support would be that we refine some of these and do a field demonstration, put some of them in a location, and then we'll do some community survey over time, not a, and we'll do them so that they're the right size, the right height, and we'll have a few variations. We've just acquired some software that will allow us to do some citizen engagement and polling. But what we really think, there's, I think, a couple of no-brainers, one of which, if any of us are really honest, every once in a while, you can't find our signs. So the one on alternating sides of the street, we think makes a lot of sense in general, especially on the major thoroughfares. We do have a concern about public safety. Many of our first responders are not based in Yountville, so, you know, that can be important. So I think what we'd like to do right now is just get your support for us to do a, a field demonstration for a period of months, collect that information, and come back with you at a later date with a discussion, and hopefully a little more public input on what they like. Because we do know the community is generally not going to like, Kevin, can I have you go over? I mean.
The metal, right.
We know, based on our community, that that's a no-brainer.
You don't need to add that question to the survey.
But I do think we need to show people.
What could happen?
One, exactly, Vice Mayor Shilton. So, we need to put a couple of these up, not, and then, you know, with a footnote of a sample, probably realistically, something on the right height. And again, this was just a demonstration for us to get a sense of what it could look like. But we can take a look at a couple of those. The right height, again, is, and then the lettering, you know, up-down versus horizontal, as you saw in Carmel. So there's some, you know, if that's the concurrence, we'll put together a program, and then do some public education outreach, and start gauging public input.
But we do want to get the council's input tonight on, you know, if there's things you like or don't like, so we can narrow down the choices.
Yeah, and I just wanted to highlight something that I, I did literally highlight in the report, because there might be some confusion about Old Town. You, you specifically call out a historic option, federal regulation, however, I'm paraphrasing very quickly here, does not apply to Old Town. So, Old Town is not exempt from this, so that's a.
Well, just because we call it Old Town doesn't mean it's a historic district. And so because a town is not designated a historic district, we can't get the exemption from the Federal High Administration.
Okay. So, I'll start with Councilmember Dornbecker and get your, your feedback.
Well, thank you very much. I like things the way they are, but I understand the need for the reflective. I absolutely would not consider the metal sign in our town. I, I would consider the.
You mean the metal post?
The metal post.
Yeah, good.
I, the wooden post with the signs as they are oriented now with up to. I, the wooden post with the signs as they are oriented now with up to, up to down or down to up or however you want to say that.
Like the post here that we have.
Yes, I think for the, you know, to at least have some semblance of what they have been in the past. I don't want to comment now on the, the signs themselves. I mean, I think that as you suggested, having it recessed and actually in the, the wood would improve it. And I definitely like the idea of having the, the-
Border?
Border around it. And I, I don't know what preference I have between the green and white or the black and white.
The other option is brown and white. That's usually more like national parks, but it is an option.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think the metal post is consistent with the look and feel of the town. I don't know that I heard you say that painting only was an option, so is there a way to paint with reflective paint or something on the existing signs that we have or posts that we have?
Not, not really. Because what the reflectivity, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is, is the material that's put onto the metal to make it retroreflective. It's difficult to put beads or anything into the paint to make it, make them meet the retroreflectivity requirements, so I don't know if there's anything else on retroreflect-
Yeah, I mean, it can be done. Again, it's an older technology. It's part of the problem with some of the stripings that you see now where in the old days, they put down paint and they literally spread glass beads on that paint and they let it dry. That reflectivity is knocked off and it becomes non-reflective relatively quickly. These are very high-tech signs, for lack of a better word. They will, and you know, honestly, it's probably worth seeing them at night in your own headlights to also judge what you think you like about the color, because the reality is, at night, this sign doesn't look green. It just looks like the word "Yount" lit up with a light bulb. This one is kind of the opposite effect and what really happens is the white part is the reflective sign and the rest of it is just simply a material that's painted on the sign. So they can look very different in a set of headlights than they do in this room right now. But you could retrofl-, you could retrofit our signs or, or keep that old lettering and put reflective material on it, but I think you would be setting yourself up for a very quick repetitive maintenance headache with the fact that what the law says is you have to maintain their reflectivity. And so just like the majority of the regulatory signs that we have in town, they were the older, what they called engineering grade. They shine really nice for the first year and then they fade very quickly and signs are expensive. These have about a 10-year life. Engineering had about a three-year life. So it's better than a factor of, you know, in, in lifespan of reflectivity.
And maybe one other question is, I mean, you know, on, on many homes, you see people have the numbers that are, I don't know, metal or whatever. Is there not an option or was there options of those kinds of things to be presented? I mean, I think seeing these signs perhaps in their, you know, in their place of residence, either on the street or somewhere, may give better indication. It's just that although we need to replace the signs as they are today, it's just hard to see these in my mind, sitting around town, given what we have. And I suspect that as we'll be replacing them, as all, as the other signs start to fail, we're going to have a hodgepodge of one town with or one street with, one street without. And the consistency would be of particular concern to me. That said, I'm also not for writing the check to replace all the signs at once. So I'm just trying to be, yeah, I'm trying to be prudent and, and if there's other ways to explore that, whether attaching letters or something, I don't know, that would be of reflective nature. If I had to decide on the signs that are being presented, as I indicated, no on the metal post. I'd be, I'd be more interested to, I mean, I think the national park signs actually are quite attractive, the brown and white, and I think if those are done away, maybe even with the border, might be something to consider as well. I think it'd be easier to make a final determination or a more conclusive determination if we could see them live and maybe even as Kevin suggested, with our own headlights.
Okay. Thank you.
And that leads to the demonstration idea. And we'll incorporate the brown on white as a sample and that, that may actually be the closest because brown into the wood post may not be as a-
Well, it would be white letters on brown background with, and you would like a border as well.
Right.
Similar to the green, with or without a border.
Right.
Right. Councilmember Mueller?
Um, yeah, we got, today we all got lots of emails about sewer laterals, but I think I got the most phone calls about the street signs. And it was very universal, "Don't change it." And, you know, everyone felt like there's a lot of changes going on in town and they've accepted all of it. But, you know, we keep talking in our general plan, our strategic plan, that we want to maintain the charm and the character of Yountville. And a lot of people just really identify with these posts that we have. So I certainly hear all your, you know, points that I hadn't thought about. A van pulls up in front of you, don't know where it is, but you know, we've got GPS now. It's a small town, everyone knows where they are. And, you know, we've got a big sign that says, "Don't go in my street because it's a dead end." They still keep going in there. So they don't pay attention to those big ones. So, you know, I think it's, I think these signs are in our Yountville DNA. So I am saying this because I really think when you put your demonstration up, I would limit it. I wouldn't have too many options. I'm not saying just restrict it, but you know, I would say probably just restrict it to those post signs with the, the different up and down letterings. The brown, I'd like to see that. The, the green, I kind of like over the white, but you know, I'm kind of open to a, a demonstration. I, don't put up the metal signs. I don't think any of us are going to probably want those. Unless there's a critical intersection that everybody's like, "What's he buying? Can't find Madison Street." I'd maybe be open to that, but I certainly haven't heard that problem before. So have a demonstration, not too many options, and I like the post. And let's try to keep them if we can.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, I didn't receive any calls, but I did have two people on the street mention this to me, so.
That counts.
What's that?
That counts.
Okay. Um, I'm not so passionate about signs. Some people are very passionate about signs. I, I do think personally, I think it's worth, you know, we shouldn't go out and buy 10 of them, but I think we should put up those, the, the cross signs, only because I think it just gives a demonstration of the difference. But I don't think we're going to go that route, so it's not worth any money to do it, because nobody's going to like those. I find the one on the post to be almost bizarre. So I, I don't like that. I think the three different ones, I think the brown is a good idea. Personally, I didn't like it in the picture, but I really liked the white one because it looks, it just kind of has an old, it doesn't look that sophisticated to me. We do need to acknowledge, we essentially have no street signs in this town. I mean, they are impossible to see and, you know, we have not had an issue that I'm aware of, so, you know, I don't want to go chasing after something that's not a problem. But I'm not aware of, you know, the ambulance going to the wrong street. But it is impossible to see signs. I've heard lots of people say, "I have no idea where I am, where I'm going." And I, I do think it would just be good to have those. I agree with the demonstration and let people see and, you know, I know there's going to be a lot of people who don't want to change it at all, so.
Yeah, I would add, as staff, we definitely hear an earful ourselves. The ironic thing is, and we now have the wayfinding signs starting to be put up, you're absolutely right. Any fireman or policeman that can't find a street in this town has got a problem. It's too small and they all know the street, so I don't buy that one. But we do get comments about sign pollution. We do get, by far, the questions are from our tourists and we know what the transit occupancy tax does for this town. So when you talk to the citizens, they're anti-sign, anti-growth, anti-anything and, but the, the citizen, the, the visitors are the ones that do say, "You know, your signs are dumb, I can't find my way." You know, "This is ridiculous. How do you get in this day and age with that kind of sign or this or that?" So it's a very different mix between who lives here and who's comfortable in Yountville and who comes and spends money and stays here. Very different outlooks on what we have in town. And we do hear quite a bit from them about poor directions is, it was the number one complaint. How can you find anything in town? Well, wayfinding signs will help.
Yeah, Vice Mayor has the floor.
I'll just, to follow up on that real quick, is what I do see, and I do think there is an issue, first of all, I would say that just people coming to my own house, you know, coming down and say, you live on Holly Street and you go down the end of the road and you can't see there's any sign and don't know that it's Holly Street. And, you know, we give them more specific directions on hit the end of the street and do that, which is, you know, that's fine. I do see people a lot on the major thoroughfares who are not from town, which I think this is an issue. Washington Street, sometimes Yount Street, but usually Washington Street, where you can see that they're going down the street, they hit the brakes, they're looking around, they finally find the sign, then they go to the next street. And, and I, I do see that happening at night. So it may be the kind of thing that we don't need to, you know, go through and replace them all through town, but there are certain areas that, you know, I know people are going to say, "Well, you know, we're, we're just doing this for tourists and it's all about tourism, blah, blah, blah." But I, I see that on Washington Street, particularly where people are going up and down the street and they're going extremely slow or they're just flat out stopping and looking around. And, you know, I, I, you know, I've got GPS on my phone, but I, I certainly know a lot of people don't have that. You know, they don't do that.
So I just want to add, and you brought up the wayfinding signs, I want to mention that too. I'm concerned about all the posts that we're starting to put in the ground along Washington. But I think we're kidding ourselves if we don't improve on this condition. I think Yount and Mount would be a very good intersection to try this out from a residential standpoint. We protect our dark community and our dark streets and our dark nights, but you can't see these. And these, these are far from compliant. I think the post with the lettering, I, the point you made about the reflectivity kind of won me over on either the green and white or the brown and white, because I don't want to see everything but the letters reflected. I want to see the letters reflected where the rest of that panel goes away. That's how you see every highway sign and it's effective at night. I do think they need to stand out a little bit from everything else that we have out on the streets now. But I would support the, the post with either the green and white or the brown and white. And for that same reason about the reflectivity, I wouldn't do a border. I'd like to see as little reflection as possible, so if we limit it to the letters, I think it's better than highlighting the panel itself. So, you know, I, I, part of me does agree with the Vice Mayor about putting the ugly posts up so that the, these posts are-
More palatable.
You know, more of interest. But I, I just think, yes, it's part of our heritage, but it's, it isn't safe. I disagree with the, you know, our regular Cal Fire and Police, yes, they know where the streets are. But we often have Highway Patrol from out of the area. We, we don't know who can't find their way around. We had to do, it was an issue at Rancho de Napa, they didn't have the street address. And there were times that ambulance service couldn't find it.
Yes, very true. And only that, Restriques, PGD crews, there's many responders beyond our local that, that can easily be confused in town.
I think, I think people would, will very quickly adapt to a reflective lettered sign on a post, like we're talking here. I think that's a very reasonable transition, especially if they're brown. Going to a, an eight-foot tall stick, whether it's wooden or metal, and putting those two up there, that, that's what I got in Oakland growing up. I don't, I don't want to see that in Yountville. And I do think we can find, I think it's a compromise to do a reflective lettering on a wooden post. And you know what? That's part of the cost of, the charm of what we do here is to replace these posts over time. So I don't, I don't mind that, to be honest, to, to keep that kind of character to the streets.
Yeah, and if it helps, you know, kind of similar to the position that you're in now with the existing signs is because they're not even classified as a sign, you have more leeway with this sign. My shop can print decorative orders, flowers, grapes. Because this isn't compliant, we can do more with this sign. Once we bite the bullet and we go to a sign that is of the regulatory size and height, you don't have any leeway. It's got to be this color and it's got to be that color and you can't change anything. So once you take that step with a full regulatory sign, you're obligated to comply with all the rules.
Well, I think you're hearing, you're hearing, I think unanimous interest in not going that route.
Yeah, I'm just sharing experiences.
Yeah, I think those are good points though. So we retain some extra flexibility while still getting more complaint.
You, I think, have provided us the feedback we were asking for.
Great.
So we will develop a demonstration program. And one of the other things we will also look at is, and Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, we had done a few things where we did the cladding on the four sides around a metal post as opposed to a solid post. So that's something we internally can look at from a cost control.
I'm working on our costs with-
Just because Kevin's not, when, when he tells you the solid wood-
Redwood.
Post, redwood is expensive, he's not kidding. So we're going to, but we will work on how to do that and there's a couple we've done. But I think you've given us some good feedback. We won't put those two up, but we'll put them someplace around Town Hall as a, a little demonstration so people know. But the, we'll come up with some of the brown, green and white, without the border and with, and we'll put five or six throughout town and, and get some feedback.
Yeah, just be careful, I'm sure you will, not to be too close to the streetlights so that, I mean, these really need to be effective, like you said, in, in headlight conditions.
And I do think, hopefully everybody understands the fact that we're having this conversation. Your staff is very aware of the aesthetic of this town and we're also very aware of the concern about sign pollution. So we do wrestle with how to provide the appropriate amount of signage and direction versus the people that want nothing. And, and that is a balancing act.
Great. Well, thank you for bringing the, the samples for us to look at. It definitely, it, it makes a big difference seeing them live rather than just two-dimensional on, on the slides, so thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel free to recycle that metal.
Take it to Napa.
Okay, we're going to move on to town council boards, committees, commissions, ad-hoc subcommittees at all.
Very, thank you, Mayor, very short report. This is our annual review of town council appointed to regional bodies. And I am asking for either to reaffirm existing council member appointments or, and/or make new ones. There's regional bodies and then there's our council subcommittee to take a look at, which there could be a couple you may need to, you know, disband if you were not using them anymore, so.
Like the Town Hall ad-hoc committee?
There you go. So with that, discuss whether you want to reaffirm the existing appointments or make changes.
Could I, excuse me?
Councilmember Dornbecker.
Yes, I noticed that under the Napa River watershed, oh, I beg your pardon. Never mind. Okay.
Were you reading the staff representative column?
Well, a- actually, it is, it's not monthly. It's a, you have it as the fourth Thursday monthly at 4:00 PM. It's every other month.
Is it now?
Yes, I just wanted to let you-
Yeah, if there's any other clarifications, that would be great.
That's the one.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Vice Mayor?
Well, you, you made the mention, the two that I thought could disappear were the two Town Hall committees, I believe. Those, the, the financing committee where you said, "That ship has sailed." And the, on page four or five, you're, you're furring your brow. Do you know what I'm talking about? So there's the Town Hall Structural Strengthening Ad-Hoc Subcommittee for Financing and the one for the project.
Right, those can both-
Those can disappear.
Those can both disappear.
Yes.
Well, are you looking for formal action on, on the subcommittees? Because, for example, the-
This is at the council's pleasure. This is just an annual review. If you want to make changes, fine. If you want to delete some, that's fine.
I think it, maybe it goes without any further discussion that when a project is over, the committee goes away. So I don't know that we have to actually formally say-
Well, in our protocols, it does say you form a committee and you disband, so it probably would be helpful.
So I would also recommend the Yountville Community Church Ad-Hoc Subcommittee be dismanded as soon as that item is resolved, which may be this, later this month. Do we need to come back after the completion of that project to-
I would probably just leave it on and each year we review, we review this, the second meeting in January, so.
Okay.
I would like to request, if I could, that I be considered to serve as, I serve on the Napa Watershed Committee, but I would be very interested in also serving on the Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District as a, as an alternate. Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District as an alternate.
And right now, see, where are we here?
Is that one that has to be Mayor and?
Yeah, the mayor's automatic and the Vice Mayor is an alternate, alternate, not automatic, I believe.
I yield my seat as the alternate on the Flood Control and Water Conservation District to Councilmember Dornbecker.
Is there any other interest? Is there any, any interest or opposition to that request?
Well, I'd be willing to let somebody take a shot at one of the Subcommittee's on the greenhouse gas. I don't want to, you know.
Well, I'm still talking specifically about the flood control.
Oh, just the flood control, no.
If there's no opposition to Councilwoman Dornbecker's request, Vice Mayor Chilton has agreed, so we could make that change.
Okay, thank you.
But Councilwoman Dornbecker.
Thank you.
You've gone, what, maybe twice in a year?
They were exciting meetings though.
I'm very interested in water.
Okay, and then Councilwoman Moller, you were going to bring up another committee?
I just, well, on the Waste Management, I still have some, some plans, so I would like to stay on that one. But I'd be more than happy on the Greenhouse Gas Committee if anybody else would really like to work on that. We've all, we finished with our inventories, so our next thing will be to be working on action plans for the town. So just so you know what.
Is that the AB 32?
That is the AB 32 Council Ad Hoc Subcommittee, so just if somebody would like that.
Well, I'd be willing to take that on for the next component.
Okay.
So Councilwoman Hall and Councilwoman Dornbecker on the AB 32 Compliance Council?
Okay.
Because it's a good transition time.
Sure, sure. Right after we've received the report.
Right. Now it's time to go to the next phase.
I have a question, Mayor.
Councilmember Hall?
Or Director and Planning. So the Z O D O Amendment Ad Hoc Subcommittee, we haven't met in that committee for the better part of a year. Is there anticipation that we're going to be meeting again? Or is that another one that we could disband in light of the?
We may. There are potential issues out there that we haven't brought to the committee that include exterior display of holiday-type lights and outdoor music. So those are items I would like to bring back to you.
Okay. I just was curious because, I mean, it's been a year.
Yes.
Standing committees for a long time.
The frequency of the meeting is not an issue.
That's not the issue. It's whether we need to committee at all, is the question. Okay, very good.
And I have one more suggestion now that you've taken on AB 32. I am very interested in perhaps trading with Councilmember Hall for the OPEB Ad Hoc. The reason is because we get these reports every time. I still, after all these years, do not understand these actuarial tables. And I think maybe if I'm on these, this Ad Hoc Subcommittee, I will actually understand them, so.
I'm, I'm willing to relinquish my responsibility. I don't.
No, wait, wait. I want to relinquish my responsibility.
Oh, she asked me. Fine, if you want to, it's.
I'm not going to guarantee that anybody will understand a table prepared by an actuary.
Well, I'm going to give it a shot and, you know, when we actually have, you know, a paid person here who's going to, that we need to tell us, I would really want to understand it for.
I'm going to move that Vice Mayor Chilton and Councilmember Mueller are on the OPEB. There's no way.
I'm on the OPEB.
You can't get off that. I'm okay with that as well. Yes, I'm fine to second that.
That one, that's, okay. No opposition, I mean, there is absolutely not a chance.
I thought he was falling on the sword.
Let's see.
Well, the once, the once-a-year meeting is a lot to take.
I don't even understand Subrina Policy Advisory Board, so I won't even comment on that one. Be nice, I just don't know what it is.
Well, that actually has a lot less impact now that our housing numbers have already been allocated. That's the Regional Housing Needs Assessment.
Right. But it's more of a.
See us in 2021.
Right, so.
But that's not really for us to cancel.
That needs to stay.
So it does meet.
Advisory Board, yes. It hasn't for, since the housing numbers have been released, but we don't know when. Because there is the ability to negotiate housing numbers with other jurisdictions, we need to always be.
So it's an official.
It needs to exist.
Yeah.
So, but we, but that's why, one thing I'm confused, why is it under Council Ad Hoc Committees and not a regional board? Is it just in a different spot?
Yeah, I think it's just.
It's not a formal JPA, was what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's why I'm kind of confused on.
But it could.
How they get put together, I just don't know.
Are you interested?
No, because I don't understand it. I'm only going to spend next year trying to understand OPEB actuarial tables.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not proposing that anything changed there on the Subrina.
But it is an official Ad Hoc Committee that we establish or we asked as a municipality to assign someone to attend? And wouldn't that be above as a regional?
We didn't ask, I think, wasn't it through NCTPA?
Yeah.
Is Danielle Schmidt of NCTPA is our point of contact. They actually asked that all the jurisdictions have Subcommittee members.
It could very easily go under the county wide.
You should go.
Because the Gang and Youth Violence Commission is not a.
And I can review back in, in April 2011 if it was for some other subject.
Not a big deal.
If it's in the wrong category, feel free to move it. I don't know, I don't think that's terribly important, to be honest. It's more the membership that we're talking about here. So is there anything else? Several of these are automatic. Hearing no other interests?
No.
Then the other changes as requested?
I have Councilmember Dornbecker replacing Vice Mayor Chilton as the alternate on Flood Control District. We have Councilmember Hall replacing Councilmember Mueller on the AB 32 Council Ad Hoc Committee. And we have Councilmember Mueller replacing Councilmember Hall on OPEB. And we're going to delete the two Town Hall Committees. And there's advisory instruction to review, remove the Community Church once that's resolved. Does that recap it?
I think so. Anyone feel good about that summary?
So are we, is the ZDRB Bylaws Authority and Procedures Committee still doing committee stuff?
You didn't go to the meeting?
On a deliberate schedule, yes.
Yes, we anticipate several of the things related to the ZDRB moving forward this year.
Okay. Then it should stay on the list.
Yes, that's, we have a motion for the appointments as stated.
So moved.
Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Dornbecker, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Any informational reports from staff? No?
That was a rhetorical question, right?
Council meeting reports and comments. I've got a couple, but Councilwoman Dornbecker, do you have any?
I do. I attended the League of California Cities Community Services Policy, excuse me, Committee Meeting in Sacramento. And it was our first one where we were establishing our meeting schedule and also goals. And it was very interesting. I brought up as one I thought would be good to talk about with all of the other cities and towns that were represented, the HERO Program. So that is a possibility. But the two that were really overwhelmingly chosen to talk about were e-cigarettes and massage parlors because of human trafficking.
I mean, in the same place.
And apparently in the town of, I think it's, it's this Southern California Beach Town, there must have been a change to the, the rules about massage parlors. They used to have six and now they have 85. And they're very upset. So this is something that we're going to be discussing all year long and I'll let, bring you up to date when I find out what the heck that is all about. And then e-cigarettes, especially in schools with children in some of these municipalities are becoming a real problem and a worry. So that's, that's my report from the League of California Cities.
And no Watershed Conservancy report?
No.
Okay. I'm going to just touch real quickly on flood control. I also did meet the Napa County City Selection Committee last Tuesday, met. The main issue there was a policy about LAFCO. Board seats are not individual specific, but they're jurisdictionally specific. So if a person goes off a council, that city or town doesn't lose the seat as represented on LAFCO. They stay in that rotation for the duration of their term. There was some discussion, but it wasn't the jurisdiction of our committee about the length of term because there are four-year terms. So basically, we have a LAFCO direct representative from Yountville, but then for eight years, we don't. So that's the way the bylaws are written at LAFCO. So if we were to try to do something about that, we'd have to go to LAFCO to do it. But there is one up Valley seat that's represented by Yountville, St. Lina and Calistoga, and each of us rotates every four years, so.
So when do we do again? What year?
We just went off.
Just went off, last year.
The Vice Mayor was our representative.
So eight years from now, we might.
Less than eight years, but more than seven.
2021.
So, you know, of course, we were assured by all the others on the committee that, that all of our, even South County representatives are representing all of our interests up Valley. So I think I better put that on the record.
So I have another question related to that then. I mean, is it, does it have, is each voting member, is it weighted like NCTPA or is it all equal like our?
No, no, these are all set up by LAFCO. So the City Selection Committee report has nothing to do with the LAFCO bylaws. I mean, you can check the LAFCO bylaws, but.
Just trying to figure out how we have two county members out of five.
I can answer that very quickly.
Yeah, it's a LAFCO.
State law dictates that.
State law, okay.
LAFCO is a state agency.
Oh, it's a state, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that answers that question.
And then the Napa County Flood Control, a four-member Subcommittee was created to work with Solano County Water Agency on North Bay Aqueduct and other state water project issues. The members that were assigned, Mayor Tekel, Mayor Garcia of American Canyon, Man Navarro of St. Lina and a Calistoga designee, because they did not have a member present, we did not identify it as specifically as Mayor Canning. But they are all direct primary water contractees. So it was, thought that they should be those that are the primaries. And I was named the alternate on that Subcommittee. And there was a report from Flood Control Staff that 2013 was the driest year on record. But the, and the Groundwater Committee recommended expanding their monitoring program. But this was somewhat interesting. Overall, the valley is, quote, "fine" regarding groundwater levels. So what they did say is in some areas, they are extremely low and dry, and in other areas, they're still in reasonably good shape. So obviously, it depends on the behavior of, of the clouds from here on. I'll add another League of California Cities.
I have one too.
Comment, okay. I attended along with Councilwoman Dornbecker and our Town Manager when the North Bay Division Meeting was held in Marin just a few weeks ago. And I don't, to be perfectly honest, I don't think there's any directly pertinent information that, for Yountville that came out of that meeting. I couldn't remember. It was a more general discussion.
It was a discussion of regional planning impacts.
Like I said, Councilwoman Mueller, you had a meeting report?
Yes, I attended the Environmental Quality Policy Committee for California League of Cities a week or two ago, I suppose. One comment before our meeting started, we were briefed by the Governor's Office on the, on the budget for this year. And the very top as high priority was the continuation of the COPS grant. So I thought, I know we always discuss that when budget comes up, so there was a lot of confidence that that would come about. We, I think the major thing that we discussed was the possibility of a 2014 water bond. That this has been something that's on, been on the books since 2009, but Senator Lois Walk and Tony Reardon from the, he's an Assembly Member, I don't remember where he is, but they're resurrecting this whole water bond now that, you know, there's a drought. And they're going to give it a test to see how much support there might be in California to put it on the ballot this year. The bond is anywhere from six to eight billion dollars right now. This is very early on. About half of, both of their bills would go to storage, which would probably be more dams and, and things like that. There was a lot of discussion within our committee that, of course, we all wanted local control because we all had, you know, things we liked to do. But it was made very clear to us that if the bond passed, that it would, the grants would only be available to, for regional activities. So we did decide that we would at least provide comment on it once it, building got put together. So maybe we'll see that on the ballot and maybe we won't. So that was about it.
Okay. I have two more Ad Hoc Committee reports. One is regarding the Yountville Community Church and Councilmember Dornbecker and the Town Manager have joined us on that. We, we've made significant progress, I would say. And we hope that an item will come back, if not on the 18th, sometime soon after that. Basically, the, as you may have had a report the last meeting, I'm not sure if you did or not for the continuance, but the Yountville Community Church has asked their architect to modify their, their application, which is what's taking the time. So they've requested this delay, or I'll say continuance, to make the adjustments. We've had some very good feedback from not only the Weber Street neighbor participation, but also from Brian Plecha, our independent member of the public. So it's been some very good dialogue and I think we are looking at a more appropriate and I think a more mutually agreeable application coming back to us soon. The other Subcommittee with Councilmember Mueller and Sandra, we, with the Town Manager, we did finally meet with our supervisors regarding the Domain Shandown potential annexation request. I would say it was not well-received. That's probably being somewhat generous. And there have been comments in the media to that effect. So if you've seen the Napa Register and comments, you get the gist of how that went. But basically, we were told that annexation is kind of a non-starter from the Supervisor Luce and Supervisor Caldwell, who are on the Subcommittee. So we have a lot more work to do there. We do meet again tomorrow morning because I stressed that it was important that we continue the dialogue since we have a ticking clock in terms of action that we've already given Town Manager regarding this process. So they've been open to that. We were able to find a meeting date within a week, which is good. So tomorrow's meeting, we'll report on, at our meeting on the 18th. We have some points that Sandra has been very helpful with documenting in terms of chronology and some of the key points that were brought up in our dialogue. There was some healthy conversation, but there was some definite pushback on the concept from the soup. So we'll see how it goes moving forward. I don't know if you had any other, anything to follow up with on that?
No, I remain optimistic, but I think the mayor is absolutely right. We're pretty far apart at this time, and so we have a long distance to get to the middle.
No other announcements or reports? We see the future agenda items there, no closed session agenda. So it looks like we're going to adjourn to our next regular meeting of February 18th at 6:00 here in our much safer council chambers.
So moved.
Second.
That's from Councilwoman Dornbecker and Councilwoman Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night.